1 PM, Jun 12, 2024. We respectfully acknowledge the land on which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of the Shaklatmek. Recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for Jun 12, 2024 be approved or circulated. Counsel McCave, Counsel Beach, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Recommendation of the ministers of the committees of the whole meeting held on May 22, 2024 be adopted. Counsel Evans, Counsel Rich, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into delegations. Rescue Boat Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue Station 106. Pat, you and Bruce can take it away. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel staff. We're here to be rescued. It's a tough thing, but we have to ask to be rescued. We're looking for some help to put our boat out. It's our boathouse on Main Street Dock. And we'll leave that. We put together a five-minute video that Karen explained what we're looking for. And then we thought we could have any questions and answers and plot things back. Now, Sarah, is that something I think we should push together?
Yeah, it should be discussed.
I'm so oriented to this part of my day.
There you go. What do you think? So, yeah, we've never done this before. We've never been here before looking for this. We've been working to do this for quite some time, basically since we started the project in 2012. To find a covered home for boats, for also for training, for our classroom setting. And so this is where we, you know, we feel is the best place to do it. Based on that, any questions, any thoughts?
Thanks, Pat. Go ahead, Counsel McCave.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation and thank you for your services throughout the year, especially in the summer. I imagine that's your peak season summer. A couple of questions. It shows our water tenure out into the channel, but about on the south and north and south ends, like, how far, how tight is our water tenure coming out off the land to the boundary in the channel? Like, if somebody else on either side of our water tenure develops, would you have room to swing in and not encroach in somebody else's water tenure to come into the base?
Yeah, the tightest area is on the south side, where you see the blue pylons. And we do have, I think it's four to five meters from the boundaries. So we have, if there's a boat on the north side dock, that it was, if it was tied up, you still have lots of rooms and then you could back and forth through that area.
Go ahead, Counsel McCave.
Yeah, I'm out in the channel quite a bit and we have a bench at the end of the dock there. And then lots of people like to go and sit on the bench and just watch boats go by or fish jump or just get be close to the water. So we would lose that, I guess, as a service to the public. My biggest question is, but that's where we're going to hopefully put our pedestrian cyclist bridge. So I guess it's first come, first served. If you plant your boathouse there first, then we would have to design our pedestrian cyclist bridge around your boathouse, I guess. How would that boathouse fit in with our pedestrian bridge across the channel? Because that would be the location of the bridge, pedestrian bridge.
So where do you think of the height of the boathouse?
Well, where would our pylons or piers go? It'd have to go before or after your boat, just the whole.
Yeah. So when we look at the height as a main concern for that possibility, the boathouse is lower than the houseboats that will be traveling past right beside it. So there wouldn't be any impact to, so if you had a bridge going over top, then it would, I would suspect, would have to clear the houseboats. And this would be less than houseboats. So, you know, if we didn't see any impact as far as it takes off, you show up and to go to the other side, we couldn't see that that would be, it would impact anything. Without seeing a design. It would be really hard for us.
Thank you.
Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, thanks very much. I'm not too worried about the pedestrian bridge because that is probably 10 years off at best. We don't have funding for it and we've got to do a lot of work before we even get to that. So to me, this is here now and it's something that we, you know, we do need. I just want to make sure that I got this correct. So because we're gonna extend it out to the tenure boundary, we're only gonna really lose three boat slips. Okay, and yeah, I mean, I think we've talked about this before around council. It's come up at committee meetings or at least councillors have talked about it. And I totally 100% support it. I think this makes sense of where it is strategically between, you know, on the channel and get to both, you know, both legs really quickly. And I think it's, it's like you need a home. And that's, that's critical for this community. And if we have to figure out our other plans, that may or may not happen, then, then I'm totally fine with that. And I think this is the right way to go. So, thanks.
Counsel Bailey, Counsel Rich, Bushel, and then Evans.
Through the chair. I am just thankful, like I'm thankful we got this amount of volunteers coming out and do this. Your presentation is incredible, the fundraising you're doing. We need this. We're a lake community. We're tourist-based. We all live on the lake. This is our kids, grandkids, us. I think we need to do everything we can to support you and keep it going and, and we'll work around it. I'm 100% in support of this and again, very grateful that we've got community members that are putting this much time into us and our lake and keeping us safe. So, thanks.
Always good to hear that.
It forgets tiring, hey? Go ahead, Gord.
Through the chair. Thank you. We have Pat and Bruce. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's, it's an honor to have you guys work in our community and we're so lucky to have you here. Remember all the days back in the houseboat holiday days and the Three Boys days? We were the search and rescues. We didn't have a support like you have a team like you have today. So I support this 100% and yeah, I would, I would make a motion to, to move this forward for sure. And I, and we can work, I know we can work around the, if we ever get the bridge, we can work around it for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Evans.
Thank you. And yeah, I would second that because to watch, to watch how the search and rescue has developed over the 16 years I've lived here and to, to see these improvements and then also just to have it so it's gonna be that much more effective in what they do. And it floats, it can be moved if we need to temporarily, temporarily move it and we're not losing more than three slips. So I think this is the way to go and I'm really excited and kudos on the video. That was well done. Thanks for your work, guys.
Counsel Beach.
Yeah, through the chair. I just really want to say how incredible your, your general effort has been, but this project, you really deserve to have that building there because our rescue on the lake outstanding and unique within the province. We all know that. And I got a chance to tour it. Rob happened to give me a little look around and the location and I just, I think it's amazing you've accomplished. And we really do need it here. You're, you're really busy. You're really busy and it's really challenging work. So kudos to you and thank you.
Thanks, Pat. I'm just gonna echo what everyone else has said. You know, I've, I've supported you from the first three minutes that this project landed in Secamus. You know, and to Gord's point, yeah, in the good old days, you were in the service boat with a mechanic and a paramedic and, you know, not being trained individuals, there's things that you can't unsee it, you know? So no, it's great. It's great for our community. We are a boating community. So this is the space to have it and I think on the channel is perfect. So what is it that we're looking for? Do we need to? Go ahead, Kelly. Sarah?
Through the chair. So at this point, it's really at the discretion of council, although we're in a committee. So the options here are to recommend a motion be adopted by council in a regular meeting or you can direct staff in some way. I don't know that any action needs to be taken at this time, so.
Well.
I guess it's being requested at this point from RM Caesar.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, and further to that, if the committee feels like they want to make a recommendation, they can make the recommendation and then it'll just come to a council meeting for council to formally adopt it. So that's, that's fine.
All right. Well, I'm gonna, I can make that recommendation that it comes to council meeting. I'll second it.
What are we, what's the recommendation?
Well, that we want to move this forward, correct?
Just the wording.
I can give you some words. So. And that the request from search and rescue, Royal Canadian Marine Search and Rescue presentation. Hang on a second.
Yes, I was.
Right here.
Oh, my apologies. I was just, then you can just read that.
Why don't we just move, why don't we just go along with that? Seeing as how it's already there. The Shaklatmek Lifeboat Society is asking for support from our councils. Allow the placement of a 62 by 44 self-contained floating rescue boathouse at the end of the Main Street Dock within the current boundaries of the district to Secamus. So can we?
Thank you for supporting.
We support this resolution and next council meeting. Okay? All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Bruce. Okay, contingency funding, Secamus and District Chamber of Farmers. Sheila, take it away.
Good afternoon. I'm trying to think of an update today. I have Kelly and Yonka about this, but unfortunately, no, we did not get our federal summer student grant this year. Hopefully, they have six pages of names to come back and this year they had two. Well, they were, they were getting to the number of people that actually and we, I mean, the summer students. However, we have a contingency plan built into our 15th century agreement, but we never use. So we'll use it this year. We've made some changes as well to adapt because obviously if the contingency is for 15,000, the grant is usually over 20,000 to 25,000 that we get. We usually post five students with that. This year we're going to go down to three. And we have a staff member who's been willing to switch a game and actually we're based upon that. So that's gonna make it at least for all of us. Plus, they will manage the students. There's some expectations for them to perform better. Sure. This things want to go program has been. Great success. So it's been a process of years. I mean, it really has, it's evolved and it releases data, especially during COVID. As the students' recitals still actually talk to people. That's where the community council and with our visitor district, some of our residents on the street, which is the heart of the context. So we really want to continue this program. We do make sure they will visit our tourist sites so that they are very clear where they could be vending our visitor. And we will continue to do that. What we've decided is we will actually have one of our students on Friday nights sit down and have the farmer's market. We're gonna extend the hours here in the building from Friday night because if a student in here, they will say this building is open and that the library is. Body, we never want our student on their own. And that's why we put this out on Saturdays to be. So that's gonna help us actually cover all of our students. You can see there that if we were working with less, like most people that I say, we tried to figure out how we can actually. Yep. Christine, I know who you're all from, but it's a great experience with sessions and it's great to, you know, lead a whole site over there and make sure that the students follow through with the climate management presentation over at the beach practice last year. We had some students. And I think this year we're gonna be proud. We've got two brand girls and one returns and we dump them in and we can all have them. So we're, we're, we're to actually be able to fix these programs this summer. Because once we have that contingency fund, we will continue to look for other sources of funding in the future. If there's any other opportunities that we can fix and changes to way the grant goes, depending on what the election looks like, we'll also determine what happens next year for student funding. The second thing I want to talk to you about is, I know that you heard a little bit about this, but we did write and get a grant for the Heritage Trail on Audio Walk. This is very much based on the results from the registry that was done here for the search of Secamus. So we're pretty excited about this. See how many partners are involved that's in there. And she's been anxiously awaiting seeing this guy. We've actually decided, we're talking with Destination BC today, they gave us go ahead. So we're actually at the art of this project. So. So today I need to get a little bit of permission. Because one of the buildings here, which is actually a schoolhouse, is owned by the district of Secamus. We've been able to get everybody's permission for the properties that are actually, yeah, the signs put on them. We've got permission, the only thing that's really, so we can actually not that on the building. It's not gonna look exactly like that. That's just a, just giving you an idea that that is still a stage. So that's one thing that we'll need to get permission for. The rest of them, there'll be a few more of those signs that Daryl and his team already put up for us a few years ago. Going up. So we need to find more of those. The guide itself should be able to produce here by us and it should be ready before the long weekend. So we'll get that out there. And the audio tour is something that will be bought. We're hoping to engage some of our local stories on the audio talk so that people can actually hear authentic stories from people who live here. The actual guide that we thought was pretty much ready to go. It does have all of the sites located and all of the descriptions that people could actually read about. We carry it with them. There's a couple of extra things that we've added. We're hoping to do some of the storytelling. We're working this last year. So, oh, and that we're so proud of you. We do have some of our heritage individuals here in our community. They're willing to do some of things for us. So from circles, et cetera. And we're gonna do a IT that's relevant to the hotel that we have here. So we're working with a few partners for that one. The walk will be on a Google-based map as well and it's cool if it's their cell phone. We need to be, be. Um, so there's the art walk, so that will be the back of the guide now. We'll, 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 yeah. Couple of other things. We're still working on our advocacy committee. The three things that we're working on and the things that the district is working on as well. It's not, I'm, I'm hopeful for advocacy to use to work with the district. And we need to make sure these projects go smoothly and that you can buy it and that just, yeah, this is what it's. So advocacy is something that we're really working on in our, in our organization. Going back, we just go back to the BC Chamber, our own member, member of the BC Society, that's been elected to the BC Chamber of Commerce. She's pretty, in 10 months, I'll be the boss of the one. The BC Chamber does a lot for a lot of the policies to the government. This year, I too was elected to the BC Chamber Executive Board, which I know is not my last year doing this job. And we were working on several policies. Unfortunately, we were very successful when we were fighting for that we stood up against the referendum on preventing boats from coming into the province. And fortunately, it was an eighty-sixty vote. So a lot of our colleagues don't really understand what it's the talk about. So we continue to work on that back in my head. So we discussions around this. And we're trying to make sure that at least locally that we are taking proper education and covering up the some of the weaknesses. I mean, that's, I think that's all that. BC Chamber will be taking a lot of policies. We had one more year that we've heard that this by far was one of the biggest ones. And lastly, the longest of the debates. So we're not sure we'll have a different outcome and there is. The argument being there's money to stop. And it should be, I mean, to actually drive the type of. That's pretty much it for me. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Counsel, Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. Thank you, Sheila. I love the Heritage Trail audio walks. I love these things. One of my questions is, how do you decide what's heritage? The other day I was talking to my 14-year-old and she said, if I could go back in time, I'd go to the eighties. Oh, my gosh. So what's, like with our heritage group or how do, how do we know what's heritage?
For the purpose of this actually doing a project, this has been all based on what the well, it's down here to the registry. So it's legitimate heritage through that. I mean, I understand what you're talking about. We have impacts where we got all the washing machines out of the storage that kids have never seen. So we are certainly more than willing to do other things that would give everybody a little bit of insight. And there's opportunities. So there's culture days that are posted to the fall. And that's something that we've talked about doing in our office. So happy to work on things like that. But this one is very much dedicated to the Heritage Registry, to stay true to what is that's dictated by the registry that was.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. I'm excited about it.
Counsel Bush.
Sheila, love what you're doing there. That's, that's great. I was going through the Eagle Valley Views Heritage Book last night that was put together by, you know, Gordon Mackey and his team. And I actually got thinking about that, how, how old that is. Like, you mean, you think about, you know, when it was done and what, what kind of date they ended? And that was a long time ago. And you, and you wonder, you know, because there's, you know, there's, you know, is it gonna be brought up to, brought up to date again by another group? It'll.
I have to get that room. They opened right now. It's getting very old.
Yeah.
You all know Hannah, who worked for us. I think Hannah will come back and work for us this year with me. I expect her to do so so that she can get the museum up to her and then her finest impression of the museum. So if that's the case, I think she'll be a really good candidate because she knows like direction, what needs to go. And I think she's got the support of Gordon Mackey as he's made a very spare. It is down at that boat, it's going to pay. Once he's gone sadly, it'll be more than what we can get now. But he wants to make sure that we can see him in the Chamber and Visitor Center to continue to go on and get the support. And that's for opportunities. I think we'll see that girl for help.
Yeah, no, that's good. Amazing amount of work and more work, more work. It is kind of a really neat book. When we were selling condos, we always gave one of those to the new owners and everyone really commented on it that they.
I can tell you a little story about that book. Two weeks ago, we had some people come in that were from England. A lady was actually doing some research. Just found out that her father was not her father. Her birth father was from, actually from Secamus. And she came here to do some research. She asked about that book. Of course, we only have one copy. Christine actually located one for her in the site of Vernon. She went down there to buy her bird and study how it was. Back the next day about it. She has new friends and they won't have that social business. But that was reported to them, like that they found a lot of her lineage in there. And yeah, so we can ask about that book pretty good. It gets taken out of oral and line. But yeah, I'm sure at some point it's time to put that story. Next story.
They, you know, lots of heritage here. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheila. Um, that was very good. I just, I, I, I do have some questions and I have um. Um, I'm challenged with the advocacy part of the presentation and the. Sycamore's Healing Center, which I, you're talking about the Shushua Healing Center, correct? And so the Shushua Healing Centers is being completed, will be open by the end of this year. Probably are moving into by the end of this year. What are you advocating for?
I think what it was really clear when we had our meeting was that the chamber is not coming off the gates to anything, that we're here to support the district. We understand there's still some issues out there and people still. Expressing their concerns or their misgivings about it and that we want to be part of the discussion in a positive light because this is going to happen. And we want everybody to be behind. So it's just wanting to be part of the positive message. That's what we're talking about. Advocacy doesn't necessarily mean it's controversial or it's. It's to make sure that we're all together.
Okay. Um, so, okay, and so I'm, I'm assuming with the district, with the um uh recreation center, you're. Advocating the same, supporting whatever decisions are. So could I ask the chamber, I mean, we just went to Silgoa through resolutions. So in my eyes, I think the chamber is truly supporting our business community and. Or should be supporting our business community and, and looking or working with the community to. Increase this uh sustain, um retention, um build. So. I guess we had a resolution that went, hmm, I think it was Ian's, um. That went to uh Silva. Can you, what was it?
The economic resiliency.
So is there a way that the chamber can jump on those resolutions and support them even though they're not passed? But just so that we're making some noise about them?
I'm pretty sure if you look at our policy guide that we just went through, you'll see them very much in there. So we're already doing that work.
Okay, so you've already promoting those, you're already working on those resolutions?
So very quick, if, if there's ever an opportunity that you want, I'm happy to share our thoughts mainly with you. As it gets really widely looked at, so you'll see a lot of the things that we learned. But we're not limited just home, but we are, that's what I'm saying. We've got those two. Area to take their things out. We've got things that we can work on here locally, that we want to be supportive of and that we want to chat around. But we also have that monitoring picture that we can work on regionally. So myself and all the other chambers around us, we can talk. So when I reached this last session, there was other people that were able to come supply their representation and to for our region. Even groupies at some which we were representing. Just like we did for the.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. And just uh, I, on that economic resiliency thing. I won't take credit for doing a lot of that. I ripped it off from a lot of chambers of commerce and, and I think. You, you guys had talked about it after last summer, cause that's what kind of sparked that whole conversation is when the government told everyone to leave. They left and then it was like, oh, and it was an immediate impact on tourism, on local economies and stuff, so. Um, yeah, no, I, that's something I do know just on my past that. Talked about quite a bit and I think it'll be something that we'll have to talk about a lot more going forward. Um, I just, just um. One thing about the advocacy, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's healthy that, that you wanna work with us even. Even if there are points that maybe you guys will bring to the table that doesn't necessarily apply to ours. I think I've said that before, but. Um. So maybe it's time for another one of our meetings, just to line up some of the, some of the, the policy stuff that you're working on. I could certainly see. Um. Some discussions around that economic resiliency, because I know it's a lot of, a lot of stuff that even. Harley and I know you guys have talked that. Everyone's trying to get their head wrapped around, how does this new environment that we're in affect our economy, right? Uh, you know, we've, we've gone from, from pretty stable summers to not so stable. Like every year, every year, people are kind of on pins and needles. Is it gonna be a bad fire year? And or, you know, even in the winter, we had a bad snow year. That, that affected a lot of people here as well, so. Um, yeah, I wanna say thank you for doing that and, and I think there's lots more that we can do. Uh, it's too bad about the funding, but you know, that's, that's why we have these, these sort of agreements and contingencies and. You know, I think it's, it's really good that we have uh you guys out there, the community and the students, so. It's uh just stuff we work through, right? So, but thanks for your presentation. Not so much of a, you know, a question, more of a comment.
We have the discussion on short term.
Right.
So that's what I mean, in the bigger picture, there are really two sides to our advocacy. Province. Uh, we do have three of our members uh as well that are anxious to get started, so it's really nice to see join our board. Not so much next two months, it will be visitor center stuff in the next two months.
Perfect. That's awesome. Okay, no, thanks, Sheila. I appreciate it. Counsel Beach, go ahead.
Yeah, through the chair. Um, Sheila, I, I just wanna thank you for all the, all this stuff that the chamber is doing and, and. So, you know, um, ask. Is there, you, you've taken a stance against, uh, on the moratorium against uh, you know, boats coming into the province? And so the other piece of that is, um, I'm, I'm wondering if you have an idea on how we can work together. To, to further an education around to people visiting our area with boats and. And um, that kind of thing, how we can work together on the, the zebra quagga muscle issue and. And boat inspections. Do you guys talk about that?
We are working with them right now to look at getting training for our students. I know they came here for the pitch out, but. Uh, we've also looked at getting some sandwich board science and some clean material. I mean, our, our way thing was the also when I started talking to. We'll leave it later on, actually, when it comes to putting boats away, putting boats in price, why would we have a sticker that says this whole is making great. That's the day of the stuff. There's some simple things that we can actually do to help people. One of the points that I made at the B C Chamber, when I was, you know, we're not considering, you're talking about other problems. We have a lot of people that have. Boat trails, boats that are registered quite strong, we don't, they want them in castles down, they're launching their boats either. But we do have a few places where there are boat launches, that's where we need some people, but I mean. Also kind of dogs do really well, so. Our, our experts stand defending it. It's just nobody has the priorities balanced down as far as I can see.
Yeah.
When you see a boat of. That magnitude uh coming from larger centers such as Kalina. Who probably had much better idea than two of you were there with me that day, for those people thought it would be a better idea to just range the boats and let people bring them. Truthfully, why would we say, how about we have that moratorium in our country? Your concern is coming up a sacred river that's stopping us in the state, so. Not so much this way, but nobody would listen to you. So we have to educate some of our own people because I don't think they, they're not living in a resort community and. And on tourism and voting, they're, they're very not caring as much. And that's very concerning to us, which is often do. And as I look at us the last thirty years for us here, it's very difficult. To do something like that right now is catastrophic. I understand having tools in the light is catastrophic, as I, they all know I come from Ontario. I have lived through that and it is horrific. Nobody wants to see them here.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Uh, can I definitely answer? I, I just wondered, um. If, if the money, any of the money, I, there's not enough, I know that and probably there's no grant. I mean, is there a grant? That, that we could access to help cover some of the expense of the education piece and the distribution of. Of um, information locally. I'm just, I'm just asking. I don't know. You would know Kelly, if there's any money.
If, I can, I can interject here. If you're looking for information, um, there's tons of it that they'll share with you that the uh. Invasive species folks have available that we can pass out for sure. If you want, I've got some at the marina because they pop in.
Okay.
And they pop in and they, yeah, I've got, yeah, yeah.
So we'd like to be able to take that and that's why I'm asked for it. We can take that when, when our students could go to those site visits.
Yeah, for sure.
They share that information. That's like we draw up maps and guides there. This is just as valuable information as.
Yep, just give them a call and they'll, yeah, be more than happy. Anyone else? Okay, Sheila, thank you so much. Okay, um, operations and infrastructure, Darryl, take it away.
In case nobody noticed, I'm. Calling a talk about muscles again, this three times in a row now. Uh, okay. I don't think we're at the beginning.
I don't think you are either.
No.
Yeah, this page is really important. This is uh. Well, that's, that's, that's pretty important. Okay, so a year, a year and three weeks ago. This is what was up on the big screen. So in a year and three weeks, we went from picking a location. And having uh just a, a design idea crafted for us. To flying a drone and seeing it realized.
Hey.
That's pretty cool.
That's really cool.
I'm not gonna focus on all the challenges that we now have, but we're working on it. There's, there's some stuff to do with the landscaping. And we wanna get some good sightlines and make sure that it's just. Every bit as good as it can be, so um. Really, really cool. When you get on site, you'll, you'll be super impressed with. Just how complex all this is. It doesn't look very big from the road. But when you go stand in there, there's a lot going on. There's a ton of turns. There's some serious depth to it. One of these is a little video. I'd love to be able to play it. Should be a little triangle down here, but I'm not seeing it. There we go, there it is. So this is one of the workers that was doing the asphalt path. So they're all riders. And so it was really cool. Once they got it built. They took turns and they were flying through this. And uh. Like they're, they're not pedaling, right? It's. Way through. And some of these guys get huge air. They were all coming off here going, this track's amazing. They don't do them with trees very often, so they're going, you, you guys are gonna be.
In the.
Yeah, you have a ton of people here in the summer wanting to come and do this. So it's, 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 anyway. Uh, we're sitting in a good spot for that. Thanks. Yeah. Uh, so the tennis courts, we took that on this year because we did pickleball last year and surfaced everything. This year we did the tennis courts. Uh, we've got a little share agreement with the pickleball society to do some fencing. We've got that in place. Uh, so that's working really well. I'm kind of all over the map here today, but we've got a lot of things going on. Riverside Waterline Project, uh, the tender closed on the third. It'll be coming tonight. We'll be recommending a company to do this. It's a pretty short window in which they'll be working, which is really good. It'll start at the end of summer, which is really good. Uh, and so the, the scope, just to remind you, is about three hundred fifty meters. We're upsizing that water line with PVC and bringing the float downtown like we need to. And then it'll be full road restoration, curb and gutter with some stormwater enhancements as well. So there's six submissions that'll be shared at the rig. Uh, one wasn't compliance. We got five. And uh, we'll make a recommendation. This is not Finless and Dock as it looks, but. To the guys that go out to repair it all the time, that's probably how it feels. That's been kind of rushed through as well and I apologize for a late item. Uh, but I will be bringing that tonight as well. That was budgeted for as part of the capital plan for this year. We wanna get that dock done as quickly as we can. I'd hope that we get some bids that would. Be just under the purchasing poly, policy requirement to actually formally RFP it. But we're just a little bit over that, still under budget, but just a little over the purchasing policy that allows us to, to award on quotes. So we had to rush an RFP through and we've got a recommendation coming tonight as well for that. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant, so. About a year ago. We recognized that we wanted to increase our cubic meters of, of effluent per day. We were told by the province, we needed a municipal uh wastewater registration, which is quite a process. So we went through, did a bunch of the. Preliminary paperwork. Uh, we had some steps to do for the pre-application meeting that we had set up. We did have our pre-out meeting. That happened on May twenty third. So we had the province come down. And do a tour. Then we followed up with a, with a long meeting afterwards. And I, I won't drill into all the requirements and all the, the necessary monitoring and studying and reporting. Uh, because there's, there's a lot, but I'm thinking maybe we could do a workshop at some time, maybe take an hour and I'll go through all of these components with you. So that you all have a good understanding what's going on. These are just the talking points from the requirement table. So there'd be a technical assessment report that needs to be done. So we'll have to identify the source of the waste, whether that's. High strength waste from houseboats or that's uh trucks offloading or it's just residential, whatever it is. Characterization of the flow, calculations, discharge process. We'll need a Q E P to do all these capacity analysis. I won't go into this in a lot of detail. Discharge to ground, we have to do a whole bunch of reporting on that. Receiving environmental monitoring, so we're gonna have to do geographical uh analysis of the stations. They want it in a three D format, so it's gotta be, there's a lot of work to be done with this stuff, but we are working on this right now. With Stan Tech behind the scenes. So some of these, they're getting checkmarks as, as we go forward. The management plan is the operating plan and a response contingency uh outlined for our department, for our, for our town. That's being worked on. Environmental, environmental impact study is probably the biggest component and we're starting on that as well. So a lot of things on the go. This is an old slide from when we did some upgrades with the diffusers. I just threw it up there to just let you all know that uh today we started cleaning up the phosphorus lagoon. So with some of the stringent requirements for phosphorus, we've had to upgrade our chemical in this building. And if you ask me, the chemical's working too well. Cody, who's our chief operator, he loves it. Cause he's compliant now all the time, but it's creating a lot of sledge in this lagoon. So we are cleaning that up today. And if anybody wants to come by, take a look at some point, just give me a heads up and I can meet you there. Uh, other fun things going on. We've got a lot going on. We've done a bunch of paving already. They got out early for us. Uh, we've got white pines widened to where it should be. We've got line painter coming in, so we'll have a walking lane there. View from uh maple to pine and burnt from cedar to pine has been paved, pulverized and paved. We've done Rama by the seven eleven. I don't know if it drove anybody else crazy, but that first stretch going in on Rama was, that whole shoulder was blown away for two years. Uh, and I've wanted to get that one done, so that's done. Uh, Whitehead, we did some work, Husky Frontage, we've done a little bit more work. We've got some patching throughout town that's gotta be done as well. So we're working on all that stuff. More speed lift station, we've got dedicated power. The conduit has been laid. We're working on that one. As I said, line painters are underway. We got the long line guys and the short line guys and so they're, they're both going. Uh, and then we've got the main street, two hour parking notices out, signs have come in. We started to get some stuff painted, so uh we'll get all that stuff in place sooner than later. And just another little project, we're working with M O T I as a partner, working on a terms of reference for a traffic study. We'll go into a whole lot of detail, but these are some of the key areas that we've talked about in this room. It's, it's probably no surprise to anybody. But our little pathway getting to the dog park for active transportation is something we wanna highlight. Uh, we've talked about Finless and properties commercially. That's another piece we'd like to look at and see if there's an opportunity for kind of service road or something in there. We've got compel crossing issues. We always have. It's a dangerous intersection. Old stall, we wanna, we wanna talk about that. And then the four laning, obviously, which is the elephant in the room. We wanna get pushing on all that stuff, so. At this point, we've engaged with the traffic engineer that's been in this room, uh, Gary from, from Vernon. He's working with us to get a terms of reference, so we can get out, get a study done with M O T I, so that's. We've been doing some signage around town. That's a new one now. That was Gordon Mackey. It's now Gordon Monroe. This is our, this is, we've dewatered, so it looks worse than, well, maybe it doesn't look worse. That's why. This is our, this is, we've dewatered, so it looks worse than, well, maybe it doesn't look worse, that's what it is. We've dewatered, it is very thick in there, that's what we're, we're cleaning up right now. Uh, we've got random calls just at various times, people dropping, pounding and dropping the grates into the storm system. So I just thought I'd throw that in there, dog's cute, thought he didn't go down. We've been doing a lot of planting around town, that's pretty much all done. This will be our angle parking on the healing center, we're going to have limited parking on the other side. Didn't have a log jam a little while ago, that's all cleared up now. Uh, and I know this is going to come up a little bit later, but I just wanted to highlight that the, the bigger project this year for the Ball Diamonds was to get the fields rolled and to get some profiling done on our diamonds. This year we infused it with sand, because we found that the really good shale that we'd been using from Canloops was tightening up over, over the years, it's been over three, four years since we added. And every time you rain and play on them, your verified less every time we go around to groom them. So they were getting, they were getting quite hard. So we cut them very aggressively with a lot of weight on that blade. We added some sand, we softened them up, we've had great feedback from people on that. Um, so that's done, the fields have been rolled. They will be top dressed and dragged with a mix of sand and soil and then aerated, but I'm going to wait till after the car show, we've got a car show going in there, so. We'll get that done, and then I just put it on this side, this is kind of the ongoing, regular, weekly stuff that we're doing. So we're, we're doing a weekly cutout of all the corners, and then we bulk-mow everything. And then bi-weekly, we're getting into trim everywhere around there. And then we did the diamond grooming, we're trying to get it to a level of every other week, just to tune them up. That was monthly last year, we're trying to do a little bit better. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to say on this, I, I have reached out to the proponent that was inquiring about renting this. I was unable to make contact, I left a few messages since last Friday. But there was a proposal in front of us. And I know some of the concerns that council had was just privacy and their own space. Took the liberty of kind of measuring this off, putting in some, let's call them picnic tables, um and just kind of laying them out, that's kind of what we'd be looking at, if we fenced that area off and we just let this as a gate, it would be an option, so I will continue to try to get a hold of the interested party and we'll, we'll see where you bring. So I got into a whole bunch of slides and I thought, you know, I'm, I'm into it now anyway, so we'll just make it fully complete. That's my favorite niece, and that's a pie chart, so.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, that's.
Honest, so. Yes, the Oilers can still win the cup, yes. Thank you, Daryl. Uh, council, any questions? Council Rich, Council Bushel, Council Evans.
Uh, through the chair, Daryl, with the parking lot over there, there's been some big cement blocks. I don't know what they're called, big cement blocks. So CSR, uh, like the, the rec center has no parking in this area. And so when you're parking in that area for ball, like or whatever, people are living there, or they've kind of taken over a private, is that their property? That's our property? Is there something we can maybe designate some spaces? Because it's quite a huge area, and when there's ball tournaments or, I mean, last night I was at ball and, and there's nowhere to park, and everyone's parking up in Vic's um, space, which he doesn't seem to mind, but I'm not sure whose property that is and how that works.
Technically, it's ours. It is our parking lot. When they, when they clear the ice, oh good, you're pulling up. Yeah, so, so that's theirs, right? That's like, so you, this, this is ours, so. I know there were concerns probably a year ago, maybe two years ago, Brett wanted access through there. He, he was pretty consistent that we should have a wide enough area for a truck to get through there. So we've, we've worked with the rec center to put up some signage, they were encountering problems with school dropping kids off, and they were using that as a turnaround. And they stage all their snow there, when they scrape the ice, that's where they stockpile everything, and they were asking if they could just close it off and use it, and we're saying, no, we need a lane through there. So that was kind of the compromise we came to, is that we limit it, but we don't like stop it. So this time of year, I don't know. I don't know if they're going to be eating that for snow, maybe in the summer, I could talk to them and see if they could relax. No. This is probably the part you're talking about, right?
Yeah, hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if maybe there's a compromise, because in the summer, they're like, now there's not snow. And I mean, in the past, I, I grew up there, I mean, we liked the snow, kids played in the snow. But yeah, it just, I know, like I'm at the park a lot right now, and it's, everybody's moving up into, um Vic's, up to the mall.
Right.
And it's, so maybe there's a way we can, I don't know, I, I don't know what the, you know, you're not going to move cement blocks in and out every year, but maybe there's something where, and especially if we're renting that out, because then we're going to have all the folks that are living in that building. There's not going to be any parking for Diamond Three. Right?
Will definitely detract from the amount of spots.
Yeah, and I mean, it's sitting empty, like it's, when I was over there this weekend, it's, nobody's in there, but everybody's getting parked in there because they don't know, they think they're getting towed.
I can have a conversation with that bend and just see if there's something we can come up.
Some, like maybe something in the spring that it's something we can use or a way around, I don't know, we can just cover up the signs. And thank you, the park looked great for the ball.
Yeah, good.
It was awesome. To Bushel.
Yes, you're, Daryl, that, uh, those boullards there they have, they say no parking, staff only. And then everybody's parking over there at the mall. And at the tournament, uh, on the weekend, now there's where the um, hockey academy is, that parking lot was full, the other one was completely empty. And everybody's parking over there, and it's just, you know, when it says no parking staff and it's completely empty the whole summer.
So maybe they need three or four spots and we can.
Yeah, exactly.
Let me have a conversation.
And it would be good for a fire truck to be able to go in there.
Yes.
You know, so that was, and Vic's now put in his parking boullards too.
Now.
And that makes it even.
Makes it even more challenging for a bus.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so yeah, I had, I had that in mind.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's good.
Your stuff.
Um, tennis court, you mentioned tennis court?
Yeah.
Did, um, were you, were you able to put a gate in there where they have Calis building this? Were, were we able to do that? We were talking about putting an extra gate in there.
You put in today.
Oh, did it?
The gate in, yeah, yeah, I'm still. I'm still waiting for permission for it, but we're, we're.
Awesome.
Waiting it shouldn't be.
It's great.
I just want to formalize it and get it in right.
In our bits, that's.
That is work. Okay, pump tracks looked amazing, uh, looks really good. We have, I know over, and I thought about this for the Ball Diamond, uh, Ball tournaments, we have in the summertime, aluminum stands that are over at the household.
Yeah.
Sit there all summer.
Yeah.
It would kind of be useful if we put them over at the Ball Diamonds or even maybe one at the, at the pump track, once it opens up, so.
That was the plan, when, yeah, for any pump track tournaments, we were going to have spots for them at, at the pump track.
Yes, great, okay, no, that's good. And then one last quick one, um, uh, when you're painting lines, are they going to paint out by the Husky? Because they're, you know, they're like where the trucks just park in the middle of the road and it's actually a road. Because there's no lines there, they just kind of park wherever they want.
In addition to the signage, maybe, is that what you're thinking, just no parking on the ground?
Yeah, well, I mean, there's room, but they, they just, like, they'll, they just think it's a parking lot.
I know they do.
They just park right across the whole road, but if you put a, a line on either side and show that there's a shoulder on either side and put some lines down the middle like it's an actual road, it would, they wouldn't park there, they, they literally think it's a parking lot.
I can look at that, yeah.
Got to drive through the Husky to get through. It's some actual municipal road. Yeah. Those are good, good work, thanks, Daryl.
Okay.
Bob, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Uh, thanks to the chair. Agreed, that pump track is world-class. My goodness, and like, I've known families for years that go into Vernon on Tuesdays to use their pump track. And uh, from Sigamoose State, they drive all the way over, so that's just going to be tremendous. Um, and I just wanted to say, I, I like your idea of picnic tables and putting some fence around that lawn by the Eagles Nest, that's a good idea.
Thanks for that. Council Rich.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to echo, give you kudos on that pump track, that is an amazing pump track. I don't think I've ever seen one quite so intricate as that. With the trees and everything, it's, it's going to be a, a draw for sure.
That's my case.
Yeah. Pump track, uh, I was watching the timelines and, you know, bureaucracy goes slow in local government and pretty impressive, like, showing the slideshow there from conception to completion. But that's not easy, so job well done, awesome, thanks.
Thanks, Daryl, um, just one quick, oh, sorry, Kelly, go ahead.
No, and just thank you, I just quickly, uh, through the chair for the pump track, just to give a shout out to Carly. Uh, Carly was the main and who was the one who said, hey, we should do a pump track here, and then second kudos to Daryl for making it come to life and council for supporting it and putting it in the budget, but this was something that Carly.
I didn't even know what a pump track was until Carly came to my office and showed me a video, and I'm like, that is so cool.
Yeah.
Awesome, um, I just have one quick question for, um, Old Town Bay, there's, uh, angle parking out there. And we've got trailers that are parallel parking in it, so they're taking up a lot of space, so maybe we could put up some angle parking on the road there. If you wouldn't mind.
Can I, can I ask, have those lines been freshly painted? Because he's out now. Is it a matter of just getting fresh?
I don't think it's the lines that are going to make a difference, but I, you know, I can't say that I noticed that the lines have been painted, but you know, when I've been, um, not around and.
The loop down below, it's the loop.
So when you're coming in and then you come back up the loop, there's.
Yeah.
Before you go back onto Old Town Road, there's all that angle parking.
Right.
Yeah, when they run out of truck and trailer parking, that's where they're parallel parking, so. Just, yeah, for folks that want to go walk on the beach and stuff like that, that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Daryl, thank you, that's awesome, you're doing a great job, wonderful. Okay, moving right along, Recreation Events Presentation, Jamie.
You never made through the chair. I was here to present my quarterly recreation update for the summer of twenty twenty-four. Um, that picture there was from one of our signature events that we did last year, which was our sidewalk art party. Uh, we think the day turned out to be that hottest day of the year, let me know, and there was a lot of people sweating, by Sarah was there with her family, and I think we seen about fifty-four different individuals up there painting and drawing on the sidewalk, and then they all come back the next day and the sprinklers said, wash it all away. One thing we didn't think about when we planned that. So I'm just here today just kind of to give you a little bit of recap of what our summer and our spring has looked like. So our spring programs this year, um, we had ten participants in our Learn to Play program with a few on the waitlist, so we may entertain with the way that we can maybe increase the volunteers or some staffing for next year, so we can actually, um, have a few more kids participate. Our pickleball numbers held steady, they started to decline as it started to get nicer outside, because everybody was moving outside to use our pickleball courts outside, but she wants all the updates and stuff for down to them. Our basketball numbers are the fun bounced around. Um, some weeks we even have a lot of teenagers there, some weeks we wouldn't, but we are working with the high school principal next year, where he's a big good on the weekly announcements and things like that, and they may be, you know, working together with me on purchasing maybe some punch passes, things like that, that they can reward some students to use. So we can increase that basketball program that we're doing. Our family gymnasts, um, parents that are homeschooling are begging us to keep this going, so we will make sure that we keep that going in the fall. Our youth classes were well attended, our fall course, we had another twelve people take a certain vacation, and we'll be doing hopefully another set of those in the fall as well, because that's usually when people need to read the order, things like that, that's when they come out of woodwork and they're feeding that. And our after-school numbers held steady for the remainder of the year, and we are technically down to less than two weeks, and our after-school program will be no more for the district disciples, so. So moving on to what we're looking for for summer, so I've been updating you through the year about what our plans were, and this is what we ended up coming up with, so our new format for twenty twenty-four for the summer is we are bringing back Danielle Lammy to stay on as our summer instructor. We are going to be offering nine weeks of half-day camps, we've split them into ages six to nine and ten to fourteen. And when families sign, sign up, they sign up for the full week. So we have nine different weeks where we're doing the Harry Potter week, Amazing Race, we are doing a Sichuan survivor MasterChef, we partner with the United Church, we have access for a fair discounted rental rate, so kids can learn how to cook. Uh, we have a detective camp where we'll be working with the arts camp, we'll geocaching, we'll be fingerprints. Uh, with Amazing Race for each week, and each program that we have, if it pertains, will be moving into the library. And Angela will be setting stuff up within the library, so the kids will be moving around and working with the library, um, the museum, and then we're hoping as part of the Amazing Race with Lorenzo and his crew, that the kids can actually go there and compete, maybe haul some hoses and things like that as a part of their, their roadblock or checkstop. So Danielle and I are, are working diligently on putting those programs together. Our camps are going to run at maximum age per age group. And so the way that works out is, it's total, wow, one hundred and forty-four spaces available for summer. Seventy-two in each, each age group, and a rec guide will be printed and distributed for, and we already have twenty-five of the spaces already for the summer with our, everything but the glitter arts camp already sold out for ages six to nine. So I may need to look at, you know, maybe if the afternoon, if ten to fourteen doesn't fill up, I may do a secondary course for six to nine. That's nice, but I go to our programs, we can be flexible, we can make those levels. Um, so I'm really excited to see this, my biggest fear, you can ask Daryl, was I was freaking out, I mean, when nobody signs up, and then we didn't even have the programs up for two hours that already had like five registrations, I was like, oh, please, who's looking after me upstairs? So we're also continuing with our swim lessons, we're bringing back Owen Hilton again this year as our swim instructors. We'll be offering four sets lessons, this year though, we're going to tame it down to four days a week. We found that if Fridays, a lot of parents miss because they're going away, that's her thing. So talking with O M C, he thought that four days a week, would you still accomplish the same sort of skills that needed to be covered? So we'll be making those adjustments for that. We will be offering parent and child lessons, preschool lessons as well as levels one through seven, as well as a set of private lessons for those children that maybe need that one-on-one extra care, maybe they've got a disability, or if there's a child that would like to do things like their, the breast or things like that, so we reserve some special time in each day for that. Our goal is to have sixty kids go through our swim lessons for the summer, and as of this morning, we are potentially registered. So I'm not really worried about needing that sixty number, not going to quit, we just don't have any fires or anything that would disrupt that. Because that's what actually capped our swim lessons last year, we actually had to drop our last session due to the wildfire smoke in the area. So our wives are doing a good class, and then I continue down at the two hundred Main Street program, I just seen the proof. We're going to get sandwich boards that are going to be made with inserts, they'll be placed down at the Main Street landing. These will start on June twenty-first, if memory serves me correct. And uh, last year on the autumn, we did some twenty-five yogis out there doing yoga in that park. So I'm really excited to see that program up and running and keep that moving forward all year round. Our golf lessons, we have seven ladies, including myself, taking part in our golf lessons up at Mary Helen's Golf Course. Uh, today we have six juniors already registered, and I've had about probably fifteen phone calls of older age groups, so I don't foresee these programs, um, not moving ahead as, as planned. So we do three classes up at Mary Helen's Golf Course, and then we do one class over at Club Chisholm because we need access to the driving range, and we're working together with Rick Thompson, and he is of the patience of a saint. Um, because if you can have the right hard putting skills, you can handle just about anything. So we're really happy to keep that going, and Rick is open to also offering golf lessons again in the fall, should the, the, the the need be there, which I know that we've already had some ladies ask as well. So you know, for the summer, uh, we are trying, trying to put together a inline skating program for June. Inline skating doesn't seem to be quite what St. Louis is, is into, but we're going to keep trying anyways. Um, we are working with the library again to host a Pirate Island Family Night at the library, so we can come dressed up in your pirate gear, and there'll be scavenger hunts and crafts and things like that that we'll be putting together, and we already have about six, six or seven people already registered for that, which I'm really excited to see. And then new for this summer is play football workshops, so kind of hoping that our, our young, uh, groups sign up for this, it's something different. And our hope is that if the turnout is good and the, the reception is good, that we could potentially turn this to a full program next spring for us as well. Um, so this year we're going to have a soccer program, Soundarm, our Soccer Association. this year we're gonna have a soccer program, soundarm, our soccer association up here. So we're actually looking at maybe potentially developing our own soccer program. I had a gentleman come in and talk to me the other day and that's what he did for twenty-five years down in the coast. So he's willing to come on as a volunteer slash coordinator slash um, you know, a contractor for us to see if we can kind of get our little, you know, fundamental soccer program up and running for us for that twenty twenty-five spring. Moving on to our events, we've got our count of the day. Um, so we've got a full slate of activities. The senior center, of course, will be getting their pancake breakfast. The Red Bar will be hosting their children's festival, the Kiki, the Echo Clown and face painting and all that sort of thing. And then of course, the district will look after the facilities down at Beach Park. So we'd like to start the festivities at six o'clock with opening address from there. And I'm hoping that we can reach out and ask for um, uh, Emily, Greg Kylo, and then P Mel Arnold to come and speak and give an opening address. From there, we have, we have this year, King Shira and Acrobat show. So a very small, small circus league type of show, but something totally different than what we've had here before. Um, they are also back with their um, act bats on stilts and the, the circus tenting games that they did with the kids last year. That went over exceptionally well and the kids are really excited to hear that coming back. Um, food and artisan's vendors. I'm having a problem finding artisan vendors, but finding food vendors for such a short amount of time.
Has been a struggle.
So that's where I've, I've gone over and spoken with the visitor center. Uh, said, hey, would you guys be willing to run barbecue that night for us? You do it for your music in the park. At least then it gives us some food that is being offered up at the, at the event for us. And I am waiting for him to go at lemonade stand. He's just going through the hoops with interior help to see if he can get his, that his vehicle planned. I said to him, even if it's the day before doing, then you get everything set with the rule. Come on down. We're not gonna say no type of thing. So a lot of the issues that I'm running into is either the, are the three trucks are either committed to another group or the ones that they've used in the past. I've had to go through some major upgrades with their vans and they're running into hurdles with interior help getting them passed. So fingers crossed next year we'll see that change for us. For now, the curling club will be running our beverage gardens once again this year. And this year we have hired Headway, an amazing local bat to grace our stage and they will be on the stage uh, for two hours for us. And of course, we'll talk everything off with our place fireworks as always. So family fun day. Um, I will be looking to mayor, council and staff further volunteer. Um, I'll be circulating the sheet here right away after Canada Day to see who's available to do what. We will just be doing our hot dogs again this year. We'll be brought with the chamber with the cargo boat races, the sandcastle competition. And their talent show. One of our weeks actually for our summer kids club is the Great Boat Challenge. So Danielle's already started collecting the carport. Kids sign up for that. They'll be building their own boat with it. So that way they can participate in the actual um, cargo boat races. So we're trying to make sure that we're, we're playing off of what's going on within our community. And then new this year is gonna be our backyard games Olympics challenge. Daryl, I haven't quite come up with the official group yet. Uh, but we have come out where we will be having twelve separate events. You are a master as a family and the way that it work will be always one adult and one child that will participate. And some of them will be timed races, some of them will be elimination races, and some of them will just be races altogether. So we're gonna be doing core hole, ladder golf, human ring toss. I'll talk about that later. Uh, uh, sad race, three-legged race, the eighting spoon race, a super horse, a Nerf gun, target shooting range. Uh, pool noodle javelin throw, ladder golf, disco. And how many times can your family bump a volleyball in a two-minute window? And what we'll do is we'll crown a gold, silver and bronze. And we'll give away some pretty cool prizes for the community. Turn this really into what a little fashion picnic was supposed to be about bringing all the community members together. So it's just some of the highlights from that. So a few weeks back, Daryl and I had a conversation and Daryl was saying, you know what? We need to actually let Mayor Council know what it is that recreation actually does work for us to be here. So I'm just gonna kind of run through some things that we do. So in two thousand thirteen, we ran nineteen separate programs. And a lot of those actually ran quarterly. So from fall, winter and spring, it's like a yoga, basketball and all things like that. So what does it take in order to put on these programs? So first of all, I need to find an instructor, an activity leader that can host the program, negotiate contract rates or their fees to work for us. And then have them be there to be able to collect the fees or to teach the program that they're running. We need to provide a contract for an outside contractor, negotiate their, their wages and their fee schedules for that. We need to book venues because we know that we don't have venues here. So I'm always working on if you sharpen your pencil, maybe make this so it's a little bit more portable for our groups that are participating. We need to make sure that I'm supplying them with our insurance to show that we are covered. I create the listing not only for the rec guide, but also on the Amelia website. I need to add the instructor contractor to the Amelia website as well. Let's get them instructions on how to use the app within their phone. Um, I give them a walkthrough of their venues, the instructions and open closing procedures of the venues, giving them the codes. Updating if there's any challenges or things that they need to know. And then I need, I look after all the emails, calls, text messages between vendors. Cause we've dealt with, oh, hey Jamie, forgot to tell you that there's actually school concert on tonight. Then reaching out to the parents, reaching out to the instructors that we have. And then of course, I always think to myself available that even when I'm not technically on shift, that if something happens that those instructors or activity leaders can contact me should there, a problem arise. So with the nineteen program that we see there, with the transition of the annual schools up, we'll be looking to add new programs. So that number is definitely going to increase starting in the fall. And I've already had some meetings set up with some new potential contractors, one which being a gentleman who liked to see us start a kickboxing program here in our community. So those are the things that we kind of do for the program side of recreation. Moving into the recreation side of events. In two thousand twenty-three, we hosted eight events with oven plug and play, family day, Easter egg hunt, Canada Day, family fun day, Halloween, Christmas light up and assisted with the holiday machine. We handled sixteen non-hysterical facilities permits. And then we handle several agreements with the state and other district assets, what could be fancy, fast houses, things like that. Most of these events are annuals. Those numbers stay pretty true from year to year. But this year we're gonna see, we see an increase where we're adding the backyard Ultra, which will, looks like will be an annual event because it went over so well. The pump track hall, hall of fire, sorry. Um, thanks to Carly and hopefully that becomes an annual event as well. And then of course, this one, the big is the B C fifty-five games that we're looking to have hosted here. We're hoping to have an updated council in July in regards. We're just waiting on a few things to come from them in regards to the triathlon. But now that we've lost, seeing where they like them to be. And their closing date is July third. So then we'll have an update at that time whether or not the triathlon piece is actually moving forward. The signals are not. So when we're dealing with all of these events, there's a lot of things that need to be held internally that um, most people don't realize. So first off, we need to make sure that their insurance requirements are covered. We need to make sure they have the two or the five million dollar liability. If they're dealing with any sort of, we need to make sure that their interior health permits in place. If they're dealing with alcohol, we need to make sure that they have their liquor control board permits in place. Then we need to coordinate with Daryl and his public work staff to make sure that we can accommodate. We've got the staffing on, those sort of things. Then we go back and we meet with the events, the, the event halls to make sure that we can cover all the things that they do. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. There's a lot of ball being back and forth. So that takes up a lot of staff time. And then of course, there's lots of internal meetings between Daryl, myself, Everett, and you know, fire chief, things like that to make sure that we have everything all covered. So we're looking at adding more events to the district to Sycamore, but not events that we actually put on ourselves. So um, Carly and I have been going back and forth. Uh, we're looking to see if we can get back in contact with strongman competition to see if we can get back on their circuit to bring it here. And last week I had a long hour meeting with the Canadian Lover Sports Competition. So that's where they do the chopping, the sign, the, you know, the, the climbing the trees, the law rules, things like that. Um, there is a potential for us, and I'm hoping to talk together with, about this, to see if that can be something that can be brought in with the hockey vest to kind of build on on that kind of event. Cause they don't have any events in the later part of September. And they were hit very hard with COVID. A lot, they lost a lot of their venues. So they're looking to add more venues and more places to actually bring a lover sports, so um, competition. And I think with the local meals and contacts or things that I have personally through, through my personal business, I may be able to find enough sponsorship and Carly's also looking at sponsorship to bring on. The one that's held in for a big meal sees about twenty-seven thousand dollars that they, that they need to operate. A good chunk of that is put towards their um, price money. And so you can have fifteen to twenty events that go on. You could put it over one day, two days. So I think we start small. And then if it's successful, then we move on from there. So that's something that we're looking at um, bringing into the community maybe for twenty twenty-five. Um, and that's basically it. This is just some of the, the programs and stuff that you see that we do and.
Thank you, Jamie. Great job. You always do a great job. Council Evans.
Thank you to the chair. Jamie, it's just great presentation. I need to ask you a question just about the summer kids club. So that's a half day program.
That's right.
So um, is I took a tour. I'm gonna talk about the new facility, the new daycare. But um, is the summer kids club? Is it something that complements kind of like a program that's going on? I know that's an out of school club. So are they running a um, summer kids club as well for parents that are working?
So the daycare, so that was the agreement that we had when Amara took over. So Crystal, um, our manager, I've been doing a lot of the labor. I've been taking the kids that need the full-time care, making sure that they have the contact over Kids Kingdom. So Crystal actually did a Zoom tour with us yesterday with the E C D meeting, but we're on that as well. They have sixteen full-time kids already registered. A good chunk of those kids would have been kids that would have been attending our summer programs already. So that's, so it's great that that transition has moved over. Our program strictly camp more in the recreation camp. So these are kids that um, uh, like for example, Steven Powers' daughter. She, mom's looking for something for her to do. He's registered her for three camps for the summertime. So Kelly will come in and be a part of some of those. We have a lot of grandparents that have their grandchildren over the summer. So they sign their kids up for camp. We have a lot of part-time residents that sign their kids up for camp. Or my neighbors down the street, they're so into Survivor. So they're all excited because they're willing to do those type of things. So anyone that is looking for full-time care is directed over to Kids Kingdom. Kids Kingdom then is looking to anyone that's just needing that half-day experience, that type of summer camp thing. They're sending them our way. So the two of us are working together to make sure that all the kids that need care this summer are looked after. But we're no longer in the care business. We are in the recreation business. Our job is strictly just that. We're providing recreation camps.
Thanks. That just clarified for me. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Council Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair. Yeah, great job, Jamie. You've got lots on, lots to go. You must have a great contact list in your phone to have all those all the disabilities and all the contacts. So good job of keeping all the uh, uh, community going.
Um, one thing you might want to look at is maybe doing a pump track training thing with, uh, maybe get Daryl as instructor after hours.
And actually, uh, Carly and I actually already talked about that. So when they have to qualify again in September, um, we are, I always see Carly with that. And on the Sunday, she's actually paying the riders that are coming to actually do a one-day workshop. So Carly and I already put that aside as a thing. And a part of one of our programs that we're doing, we call ourselves the Romy Rascals. And that's actually a bike week. And that will be one of the things that we will be utilizing as well as a part of our fit sporting week. That'll be a day that will be a place to traffic stuff.
You're good. Great.
Good job. Good job, Council Evans and Council Rich.
Sorry, just one more question. Um.
Oh, sorry, Gord.
Gord's not done?
No, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just finish up. Um, I spent some time with Mike from Riverside and I don't know how council, how council feels about it, but um, you know, with his background and his contacts with uh, bands, it would be kind of cool to have a, an actual a good uh, uh, a really good bunch. And I, I don't know how they really feel about it, but, but Mike is really, really keen on it. It's just something as an event, it might, might be something, you know, not, you know, I know we had the stop, but I'm not saying it's all of the stop, just an actual concert hosted here. So I remember I, in the old days when, when Tupper used to come or we'd go see Bryan Adams and run the soak on the river. Kind of cool. Concert in.
Daryl and I are currently working on setting up a meeting. We just haven't been able to get our schedules and my schedules to connect. So we're hoping early next week, we can sit down and have that conversation with him. As well. And then I've also reached out to him as well as Morgan, Tuna.
Yep.
Here to see if there's a way that we could put together a children's music program in the fall. Or maybe we can utilize some, you know, kids guitars, things like that. Or he comes and teaches guitars. Mike maybe has a lender program, things like that. So those are all things that are going on in the background. But if I told you everything else going on in the background, I'd be here for two hours.
Sure. Big, thank you.
Council Evans.
Love that idea. Of course, Gord. Um, did I, did I miss the date on flag football? Cause that really interests me. That's a lot of fun.
On this tenth and those, in the two days of the fall, it's a hundred dollars for those two days.
And ages?
Ages eight to fifteen.
Council Rich.
Uh, through the chair. Yeah, Jamie, I just want to say thank you. You know what? I, you know, I've got kids in these age groups and I'm at the schools and stuff and what recreation does to bring families to this town. And when people come to look at houses or what they're gonna do. Um, this is something we really look at. And, and, and so I really commend you on keeping and, and like trying different programs and and, and carrying on within all the different things. Because I think it really brings a lot. And it's like you said, with tourism. Um, that there are people that come and they, you know, at some point we free of vacation with your child, you're like, where are, I'm, where am I putting you? And I think that's I'm done. I'm done. Where are you going?
Part-time residents and a lot of grandparents who do utilize our summer programs, whether they swim lessons or our summer daycare programs, because they are they are looking for that little bit of a break, that sort of thing. And then it's really great because then those kids forge friendships. You know, and they look forward to seeing each other. So every summer they come back and like, oh, you know, type of thing. And it's really cool because as you see the page out of our program, we go down to the beach. You actually see that even though they're fourteen, fifteen years old, they still have that connection, which is really cool to see. They're still building that community thing, even though they may not necessarily old be right there.
Yeah, great. Council Beach.
Yeah, Jamie, I just want to say, it, I, every time you, you speak about your plans, they, it just gets longer. I just did two pages full of just writing to try and keep up with you. It's um, it's amazing. All your ideas are just great. So good job. I, I love the, I love your approach and I love the way you connect with all these different assets that we, and we do have a lot of assets in our own community. So, good job.
Thanks, Jamie. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, um, R W Brewm Bridge Reprovision Project Update. Kelly, take it away.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, so not, not as exciting as all the other presentations that we have today. This has been a pretty feel-good committee of the whole. Uh, so Brewm Bridge, um, okay. So as every, uh, the tender is out. So they have tendered out the Brewm Bridge project to the seven um, pre-qualified applicants. It closes July eighteenth. And they're hoping to award it then shortly thereafter. So they're looking to hopefully start working in September. On that being said, um, M O T I is slated right now for the July tenth Committee of the Whole. Uh, to give council an update and to discuss the traffic management strategy that they've developed. So they will be coming to the Committee of the Whole uh, on July tenth. Um, uh, in addition, I was hoping to have it to, for this meeting. However, it's not quite ready yet. We're, we're back and forth with M O T I uh, on an agreement. So there will be an agreement between M O T I and the District of Sycamore for the replacement of parking. Um, and that's the short-term parking at Beach Park as well as the truck and trailer parking. Um, and along with that will be a R F P looking for some land. So um, and we're just doing some back and forth right now. And I don't want to bring it to council until we between M O T I and, and staff that we feel like it's good. So that'll either be at the June twenty-sixth meeting, or it will be at the July tenth meeting. It all depends on the timing uh, with M O T I. Uh, the gist of the agreement is that they will give us uh, up to five hundred thousand dollars um, for the fair market value of the replacement of parking for a five-year term, starting April of twenty twenty-five. So, so our R F P will say, hey, we're looking for parking from April twenty twenty-five for five years. Do you have land that we can lease? Um, and whatever that fair Um, and whatever that fair market value is, we're making it so that the agreement has the option. If we wanna take that fair market value of that leased land and if we wanna buy some land, if we're able to, we can apply that to the acquisition of land. Or we can just lease the land. So it'll, it'll have flexibility built into it. So we're just going back and forth with MOTI's legal. To make sure that everybody's happy with how the agreement is is worded. But that's the gist of the agreement and the schedule within the agreement is the RFP for first things. That they're kind of one and then. The agreement is with MOTI and the DOS, but then the RFP is between the DOS and a landowner. So we're kind of the middleman in this, but that just explains that. So you will be seeing the agreement as well as the RFP at an upcoming meeting. It'll leave either the next one or the one thereafter.
Awesome. Thanks.
And that's pretty much it for the update.
Council McKay.
Yeah, thank you, Stuart Kelly. Uh, I like the option of potentially um purchase down the road too, because Landmass, Landmass in Sicamous is shrinking. And in five years from now, whatever is still available will be more expensive to lease. Will never get any cheaper. So I, I like the option of at least with the purchase. Uh, with the opportunity to purchase.
Council Beach.
Uh, yeah, that, how exciting. You said it wasn't as exciting. That is exciting that we're actually getting started. I didn't really know if we were gonna see it quite so quickly.
Thank God, ten years later.
No.
Yep. Anyone else? Thanks, Kelly. That is exciting. Okay, move.
And and just one more, more item to note is that they anticipated to be completed. So this is, it is the completion date by the end of twenty twenty seven.
The bridge?
That's what they're saying. Yeah, that's what, so when they.
Loud, that's outside voice.
However, they're giving us five years for leasing, recognizing there could be some movement on the completion date. But they're really pushing hard to get everything through and locked and loaded. So we've been in contact more frequently and they are excited to come to council to share their traffic management strategy. I think there'll be a few of them coming, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Kelly, uh, Shishaw uh Healing Center, construction update.
Okay, so there, not a, not a massive up update, but we get these monthly, so we just share them with council. So this will be the report for the month of May. Uh, so in May, we, uh, all the puddings, uh, the foundation is all done. They backfilled, uh, they've done site grading on the parking lots and they've started some mechanical and electrical underground. So that's what they've been working on for the month of May. Uh, and in June, we are going to be pouring the slab. So there's gonna be, we've done some change orders. So because of delayed on the steel, they're having to do some of the inside work um before the outside. So we're, there's some change orders for that. And so they're, they're getting, right now, we're making sure all the electrical, mechanical underground. Uh, is locked and loaded and then they're gonna be pouring the slab. And then, uh, and as well, you'll start to see some of the retaining walls for the deck on the outside, probably starting uh in June as well. So they'll, they'll be doing that, you'll see in the upcoming month. So right now it's pretty quiet over there, but you'll start to see some more work going and then, then the walls will start to become, go up. So that, that will be a game changer in terms of what that looks like, right? And if anybody wants to see some material that is going on the health center, uh, there's a bunch in my office. So you can come at any point. There's the rock, there's the big cedar that's actually a steel. And then there's the glass and the glass around the building is, there's a couple colors of blue, uh, so it looks like waves. Well, it's, it's definitely, the materials in this building are solid, solid materials. So just working on that. And we've met with um actually Mike from River Songs to go over how we're going to deal with the sound in the community space. Uh, in terms of how we're going to host things in there and how it's gonna be wired. And how we're gonna add some sound baffling to minimize the sound. The ceiling seventeen feet high, it's a functional space. So we just wanna make sure that we get this, the sound piece right. Um, so the only risk on, on this progress report is the timing and delivery of the steel columns. But we've switched and we're doing some inside work as well, so uh no other risks noted. Um, and the change orders are minor in nature, other than the last couple, which were shifting some inside budget to the outside budget. So we had to do some change orders for that. Um, and that's pretty much it on the construction side. We have our next onsite meeting actually on Monday, July seventeenth. So Brian will be here along with the key people from Scott Builders will do our onsite uh meeting. And then after that, we'll be heading to Splatzen uh for our um community uh engagement session over there. At five thirty, I sent out the slides and some poster boards that we have been working on to try to, so we're able to explain what this facility will be. How it will function and to try to get some input from uh, from Splatzen on how they feel that they could use some of the spaces and get some input from them. So that's, that's the plan for that day. And whoever shows up, uh, great. Uh, I will be leaving along with um Karen and Brian. And then whoever from Mayor and Council is there, then we'll introduce and we have a little bit of a presentation. But then we wanna try to get some input and go around the room a little bit, so.
Perfect.
And so far, uh, from a budget perspective, I think we are about where we started. Cause we've done some change orders, but we're also saving that winter allowance. So I haven't gone through it yet. But I will be summarizing where we're at from that perspective. But so far, so good.
Excellent. Sounds good. Thank you, Kelly. Council, any questions? Council Bushel. It's awesome. Yeah, it's, it's, it's going, it's, yeah, it's coming together quite nicely. Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for all your stick handling with this. Appreciate it. Okay, twenty twenty four Union of uh BC Municipalities Convention Meeting Request. Sarah, take it away.
Thank you through the chair. So the purpose of this report was to confirm the meeting request that will be submitted for the twenty twenty four. Uh, Union of BC Municipalities Convention. So I've included a table in the discussion. Um, I'm not sure if you wanna go through each one or if there was any comments overall, if there's anything that's been missed. Uh, the deadline to submit the requests is June twenty first. So after today, once uh staff has council, council's blessing. Will be submitting those and then we'll see um what responses we get. Start organizing for that week in Vancouver.
Council, any comments? Council Bushel.
Let's see the chair on the um, um, when do we get to Honker Horn with the premier? Might wanna put a daycare, the daycare in there, too. It's kind of very important, I think. Um, cause that was a big thing for them. And just my thought in which, and then um, I noticed um, we, we talk about um. Olden decommissioning some of the logging roads.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I hear through the grapevine, Owlhead's okay, but it sounds like um Gordon uh. Gordon uh, what's his last name? Canfield. Um, he's gonna come in tonight and just speak on, in fifth, on the last staff of the council meeting. Just about, uh, he just found out that they're gonna decommission um, Sycamore's Creek Forestry Service Road. So that's a really strange one that they're gonna decommission that. And they've provided a map to him. And uh, cause that's part of the Shishaw Trail Lights Trail, the, the lizard uh trail.
Yeah.
So it, they're gonna actually start pretty much where the road wise and goes to the water treatment plant. Uh, as soon as that wise thing starts going up the hill there, they're gonna start decommissioning right there and go around the corner, decommission all the way up the canyon.
To the reservoir.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not gonna do commission before the reservoir, the branch is over. So we gotta work on that one. That's, that's an important one, cause that's a beautiful hike. And I mean, it's actually designated, Phil has designated the forestry service road as an ATV route. And uh, there is lots of people going up there and, you know, maybe school on that one.
So, sorry, and that's part of lizard trail, which is, but that's part of the CSRD portion, right? So, wow, okay. Yeah, maybe we can have that conversation. Council Beach.
Yeah, I, through the chair, I just have a, a question about um, like I'm thinking about, more about forest management. Um, as being a huge issue for us, um, well, for everybody, but in particular for us. They wanna decommission our trails, but um, would it be reasonable to, to meet with um, the Ministry of? Or like meet with somebody from the Ministry of Forest to talk about management of, of these forests around us at urban. The urban forest lines, um, we don't talk about that, but we've had wildfire after wildfire after wildfire. And, and uh, you know, Bush Creek East is just recovering from a, an attempt to. To protect them from a fire that was coming on. I'm just, I, there's a lot that we need to talk about and I would love to have a chance to. Sorry, go ahead. Probably.
So you go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm done. I just, I wanna meet with forestry is what I wanna say.
Hey, Gord, go ahead.
Just quickly, just when that fire was going on in Two Mile, they used that road to access and put up fire breaks and do all kinds of stuff. We used that road on the two fatalities that happened on Sycamore Street. Uh, we actually uh tourism, uh, took the rescue right up that, right up. They were able to drive right to the site. And so those roads, if they deactivate them, you'll never get an ambulance truck.
Yeah. So Gord, do we know who, sorry, who is calling for the deactivation of them? Like who is requesting?
Timber sales. So it's a province. It's timber sales. So what they do is when the province gives out the tenure to log. Part of their agreements are to decommission when you leave. So, and then there's other loggers that will come back in and open it back up again when they, when they offer the timber up to somebody else. But that's, that's the way it works. They, they, they have to decommission when they leave. But, and the rec sites and trails don't wanna take responsibility of it. Um, for recreation unless somebody else gets involved and has insurance on that trail. So it's something, something like Pam says, we should maybe talk, forestry and all the communities, it's not just us, but all the communities have the same problem. If they decommission right into the town, you can't get back up the mountain to.
Council Beach.
Yeah, I just, that, that was definitely a discussion that was held at their Keeping a Rural Conference. They had a whole morning on, on wildfires and forest management. And they admitted, you know, they admitted that they, they were kind of learning from all of these wildfires. And, and uh, even the pre-burn, attempt to pre-burn out in Scotch Creek that turned into a massive disaster. That was an attempt to burn a, a piece and stop a fire, not create one. So I would love to have a conversation with them. And why are we decommissioning these forest service roads that we will ultimately need to go in and deal with our? Manage our forests and keep our communities safe. It just doesn't, to me, it doesn't make sense. Anyways.
Council Rich.
Yeah, through the chair. And the other thing about the decommissioning is they don't put up a sign and say this trail's closed. They dig big, huge ditches.
And they're dangerous.
Too using them. And they don't understand, like, it's actually very dangerous, especially for people that are frequent the area, right? So, yeah, it may, it's maybe a bigger discussion we need to, cause it's, it's a lot of, it's tourism, it's our local folks, it's recreation, so.
Yeah, sure. Is there a space, Sarah, that we can add?
Uh, through the chair. So we, there's a meeting request with the Ministry of Forest regarding the Sycamore's Narrows Cumulative Effects Study and the Notation of Interest. Uh, so we could add it there. I think that's second.
Space to add it, yeah.
Page down. Yeah, the third. From there, we can add.
Wasting our concerns on decommission as well as forest management.
So forest management, um, so the decommissioning we have under the Ministry of Environment.
Oh, yeah.
Strategy, just in, and I mean, we can pop it into both, uh, I know that rec sites and trails BC is under that ministry. Uh, so we'll, we'll get it all worked out, but we'll make sure that there's forest management is included.
But maybe pop them into both, yeah, cause we can, it never hurts to talk to every, share the story with everyone.
Sure.
Okay, all right. Moving right along. Um, Council Bushel, Recreation and Events Budget.
Oh, yeah, no, I uh, um, I was gonna briefly talk to Kelly about this, but um, you know, just, you know, just trying to, trying to figure out. You know, after going to the ball tournament on, on the weekend and, and just seeing the number of people in town and then going to the Legion that night for the market. And seeing the traffic of families and people running around town and going to the restaurants, it was like a major economic boost for the community. And I, and I think if we, you know, try to focus on, when, and this is like talking about budget times, you know, down the road. But if we try to, you know, keep track of our, you know, and, and just build a database so how we can continue to um, enhance our ball diamonds. And, and really start to, to bring communities into the town or people into town to help, especially in the spring and the fall, you know? And uh, so I just would like to, you know, um, see if there's any way we can actually try to keep track and, and. And Daryl and Kelly and Bianca can, can help us with this is how do we keep track of what we spend on our ball diamonds? And, you know, and each year, I know Daryl wanted to do one ball diamond at a time, but it doesn't seem like we're doing that. We're doing, trying to do them all. But maybe we, you know, maybe we do one ball diamond at a time and budget for it. And spend, uh, you know, uh, a whack of money trying to get them up, you know, the way we, way, way we want it, really smooth and. And uh, dressed really well. So that was just, that was just something that we talked about um, a couple of weeks ago.
Kelly, Bianca, do you guys have anything you wanna share? Anything?
Yeah, just when it comes to budget, like right now, we budget parks just as one lump sum. We don't break it out. Um, if council so choose, we could, it does take a bit more, I mean, we have to code separately and everything, all of the staff time. So whenever our parks employees, I love all, they fill out their time card, they put all their time individually to the different tasks. And right now, most of those parks employees are putting, you know, worked at this park and it goes to parks. We would have to set up individual ones for each park essentially. And uh, so we could do that from a time perspective and then contracted services, materials. Um, right now, it all goes into parks. So it definitely would take a bit more staff time, but um, yeah.
Yeah, through, through the chair, it's probably a little easier just to work backwards with, with one of those locations. Because Bianca's right, if, if they're out cutting Beach Park and then Finless Park, it'll go down to eight hours of mowing in the parks, right? So we don't break up the sports fields, but we, we keep track of how many cycles we do. So we know we're on our fifth cycle of mowing. We know we've dedicated two full days to the diamond grooming. Like those kind of things get tracked and it's easy enough to work backwards and go, you know, this is kind of what we spent. I think the challenge this year was, uh, well, there are a couple of challenges. One was, baseball started really early this year. And I know I've had some people say, no, it's been in April before. I've never remembered middle of April. Them knocking on the door going, fields aren't ready yet. They, I don't think we've ever had them ready at that point. So if we wanna do it sooner, we could try and get the casuals in a little earlier in the year, maybe just a few more weeks. But we're just coming out of snow melt and street sweeping, which was a, another little thing that happened this year. We took on. And a lot of resources went there early on. So, you know, going forward, we can aim for a little bit earlier to, to get it where we need it to be. I think um, just from some of my digging in the last couple of years. And I have had some, some, some people come out and visit me out in the field. And I know Colonna did the whole rehab and uh, we've got Terra, Terra Salt's done some work for us and they came out. And it's astronomical what it costs to strip a field and rebuild a field. Like, for what we're looking at, we're maintaining seven point two acres. The whole field is about nine acres, all, all four diamonds. We would be over a million dollars easily. So what we've done is we've kind of taken the approach that. Um, yeah, ideally, it would be nice to get one hope totally rehabbed every year. That's still a really big cost. So what we're, what we're doing now is rolling and just, we're gonna top dress every year and, and then we'll, we'll rake it on. And we'll, we'll level as we go. And, and so in time, those voids should all disappear. We did a really aggressive roll this year. We've never had a, a drum roller actually out there getting every inch of it.
Yep.
And it really helped a lot. Uh, I was, I was resistant to doing that early on, cause I thought we're gonna have irrigation heads broken everywhere. And you know what? We, we marked everything really well and it can be done. So uh, I, yeah. I think we have a bit of a plan to, to be a little earlier next. I think we have a bit of a plan to to be a little earlier next year and we'll continue to put a good effort into leveling the best we can. And uh, yeah, I think I think it'll be good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Also, Rich. Yeah, thank you, Darryl. Like, the fields look great. And I I do think we need to, and Darryl and I spoke um and a couple other people through the park and maybe starting. Friends of Fin- Finlessin so that the user groups, we can sit down and see what we need. Cause what's happening too is times are changing, right? There was no ball in Sycamore that was done as a ball in Sycamore. Then we went down to no ball. We probably uh, talking to coaches on Sunday, we're probably gonna have five teams um. Gone from one team to three and we probably will have five minor teams this year. And again, the uh beer leagues are growing too. So baseball is growing and like, for instance, um. There are uh forty teams going to Summerland this weekend, uh Friday, Saturday, Sunday, just the under thirteens. So that's like, it's R Vs and families and and all those people are hitting Summerland. So, you know, again, it's something, you know, we're doing the pump pump track and. Sycamore is a great town and and maybe it's something, you know, we're still kinda June's a season, you know, we're shoulder season in June. And if we can get those kind of tournaments here with the little kids, people spend money, like they don't want to go hot dogs on the third day. They will be in the restaurants and, you know, they forget stuff. So um. You know, I think that's kinda what's where the part was is ball wasn't big, right? And now it's just, it's coming back and and there's. People working really hard to get that. So I think it's great and it looked great. And I think we just gotta keep focusing on it since there's, we've got like our own people that wanna play ball. And then it it is, you know, the tournament did bring a lot of people. There were five hundred people in town for the tournament. And everybody was happy, which is, it was a great and the the uh. Uh, market was incredible, like so much fun. It was just a really great weekend.
Kelly, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was just going to add that going into uh budget time, we'll make sure we. Take a look at our parks budget and it'll be something that we can talk about in the in the fall when we look at. Our parks. I know it it goes up and down, but we can kinda dig into it a little bit further and have a. Robust discussion about our plans for the upcoming year. So everybody's on onsite. In terms of the level of service that we wanna provide to the community, right?
And just to add to that, just a little bit off the topic, um, with the Eagles Nest, if. That um individual, that company doesn't want to rent that, perhaps we should focus that on a. Summer sports facility where we are, you know, people are coming in and they're having baseball clinics. So then, of course, they can. Rent that space. So maybe that's, you know, maybe it's something that we should consider just keeping it for our use because the. The start of this, it was all about a hockey school. And then, you know, we got the Eagles in there because we didn't get the hockey school and the Eagles, you know, it was great having them in there, but maybe we should just keep it as a. Hockey or not a hockey, a sports accommodation facility for those coming into town. Just a thought, food for thought for council, doesn't need the decision doesn't have to be made, just. I'll kick it around, kick it around, maybe Darryl kick it around. See what happens. If she decides not to, maybe we we consider.
Yes.
Keeping it.
We'll bring more information.
Kate, is that anyone else? Kate, um, Council Rich, School District eighty-three budget.
Uh, through the chair. So I'm not sure who's keeping up with School District eighty-three budgets, good times. Um. So, School District eighty-three, uh, we were cut three million dollars um, two weeks ago. Um, and eighty-eight percent of that was frontline workers. Uh, so our uh trustee is Brent Jennings, he has come and spoke here. Um, and the other trustees voted against this. Uh, which I think School District eighty-three was quite surprised. Last night they had an in camera. Um, the next meeting is Tuesday. So how that affects us is. That's our teachers, our AEs, our bus drivers, our janitors that we're losing. And how that affects Sycamore is I'm coming to move here and live here. And I say, I don't wanna go here. I'm going to Salmon Arm or I'm going to Rebel Stoke because they have better schools than we have. The budgets work per kid. So you actually, the school gets X amount of dollars per child that's in that school. You lose those children, then you lose the teachers, then you lose the help, then you lose the recreation programs. Um, and all that good stuff. So. Why I'm bringing this up is Brent and I have been talking back and forth. He works away three weeks and so he's hard to get a hold of, but um. He was looking either for a letter of support or or Sycamore's being aware that this is a. This is affecting our community. Like, it's not like affecting just the kids. It affects our entire community when we start cutting. Frontline staff. It and especially in a in a in a town this size, um, we almost lost our schools not very long ago. We're building them up. And now we're getting hit again. Um, so I don't know if that looks like a letter of support. Uh, that's what Brent had called me about is saying, can Sycamore say, hey, you know. We gotta figure out where we're gonna get some more money from and the town of Sycamore cares about that. Or just people, us listening in on the meeting or writing a letter. I'm not. Quite sure what it looks like and what how we feel as a council for that. I would like a letter of support from Sycamore saying. You know, we've got to really support our frontline workers here. Um. Because especially for a school our size, it's gonna be devastating if we lose those guys. So. That's uh what's going on with School District eighty-three. So next Tuesday, the meeting will be online.
So I have a quick question, so and I may have misunderstood. So we get. Budgeted per kid. Have we lost children? Is that why our budget's gone down?
They're predicting losses, but we don't know that. And they budget per kid for the beginning of the year. So for instance. Um, and I don't just, it's round numbers, but say the elementary school had. Two hundred kids at the beginning of the year, they're at two forty, but they are budgeted, they so they don't get an extra teacher, they don't get an extra AE. They get that mark at the first of the year on who's standing i- in class September third. And that number doesn't move. So that's a provincial. Teaching, that's how they've decided to distribute money. Um. But and I'm more than happy to fight about that too if we want to, but I don't think that's a today thing. Um. So you don't, and if you lost ten kids, then you wouldn't lose your money either for that funding.
Okay.
Right? But they're predicting that there is going to be a loss. But especially for a school like us that doesn't. It really affects us because we can't offer courses, right? You can't, we have ten, we have ten teachers at the high school. And they can't offer courses. So what people do when they come to buy a house, they look at Sycamore's and they look at Salmon Arm and they say. I'm moving to Salmon Arm because my kid's gonna get a better education there. And we're building our schools up. Hacks are doing incredible jobs fundraising for playground equipment for 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 um, right now, we're fundraising for. A laser for the high school. We're trying really hard to be competitive. But we also have to stand up for our frontline staff and say, don't take the money from here. In my opinion.
Council Evans.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, the comment is both schools and Sycamore's grown. So that's that's not the issue. There's something else going on um in my day job. Uh, they must be hurting for money that. I went from ten eighty a month to sixteen hundred twenty-seven dollars in in one month. For the church to rent the uh gym. So I I think they're having some kind of budget shortfall, but there's no way that our schools have shrunk. Like Siobhan said.
Education's taking a kick and like they're taking money away from. Go ahead, Gord or Council Bushel.
Yeah, that's really important. Um, I I agree. I'd support a letter for sure. Um, you know, you start losing janitors and you can't book the place at nighttime. You can't book it for a an event, you know, when you have your sobeal dinner auction and it just goes right through the whole system and uh. Yeah, I uh, we have a fair amount of development looking like it's gonna happen on in town and uh we're growing, so. That's the last thing we wanted to do is scale back. We wanna move ahead and we we need more money.
Council Beach, Council McCave.
Um, yeah, I I agree, um, Gord. I think that we need to let them know what's actually happening here. We need to talk about, uh, we we've we've gonna have more kids, more families. We've just put in a. Crazy pump track and we are doing stuff like that for the families because we do have more. Young families here. So they need to hear that. And also, I I agree that they need to see that we are. We are also building housing and and so clearly we're gonna grow. Right? And and just make that really a strong point and. And say our schools are getting, gonna get bigger, not lose. So we, you know, we need to push that.
Council McCave.
Yeah, no, thanks for bringing this to our attention. I and I I agree a hundred percent. I'm just looking at that tape on page seven to twenty. Uh, staffing table. And uh, yeah, a reduction in educational assistance, school support staff. Operational support staff, other professionals and. Uh, teach bridge, I'm not sure what that means, but down down two point six FTEs. So they're they're dropping the total of uh. Forty-one FTEs. That that's big. That's huge.
Well, maybe this is bigger than just. This letter, maybe it's a bigger letter that we need to get more people involved in. We're gonna have to. Yeah, look at our MLAs and look at our um MPs and start pushing back on the um. On our. As education being, you know, taken away from us and and funding for education being taken away. So. Maybe this is a bigger picture, you know, maybe it's it's a bigger letter. Um, maybe we should start with a a a support. But. Go go a little bit, go a little bit bigger, I'm thinking. Ministry of Education. Yeah, cause if if everyone doesn't start pushing back, then we're just, and we have a tendency to do that right now. We're just taking it. We're we're just taking it from the government. We're just, whatever they wanna do, it's like everybody's walking around. Fine, whatever. But you know what? It's time for us to start. It's time for us to get a voice and start pushing back. Council Rich, Council Evans.
Yeah, and through the chair, I have um, Rich Show to MLA Kylo, he is aware, they are. He's he's very focused, as is Mel and they're focusing on that. And absolutely, we need to to keep and, you know, we're all so busy and who listens to a school district eighty-three? Um, yeah, exactly. Um, but we do need to be aware and um. Again, it's stuff we can do as individuals too. Uh, we all know what uh, pen to paper does. Um. So, yeah, I would appreciate if any kind of support we can get.
Council McCave and Council Bushel. Sorry, Council Evans, you were in there.
I was just gonna ask a question. So you said that there's a meeting this Tuesday?
Yeah.
And and the public can go to that?
Yes, and you can zoom.
Right, and is there a chance that the meeting like there is here for us to say something, pull you into that meeting?
Yes, at the end, just like our meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, through the chair, the recording from the last meeting too is on their website. Um, so if council wanted to look back, so they uh. They voted down, they didn't do verse reading of the budget then?
Okay, they came at three million and the trustees voted it down. There was an emergency meeting on Monday night at in camera. And then this coming Tuesday, they'll be coming back to the public. But again, that's where le- letters and 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 people giving support. Um. That's what we need, right? If it's important to us.
Council McCave, then Kelly.
Through the chair, maybe the Council Rich. So down two point nine million uh for. Uh, staffing and then and then extra hours, they're also down two. And not two hundred fifty thousand if I'm reading that right. But my question is. Is the enrollment down proportionally to the budget?
Through the chair. Um, I can't a- answer that. I'm gonna say no. Um, they're saying that there's gonna be about a seven percent drop right now. Um, in in within our school, and this is School District eighty-three. This is not Sycamore. So that's Salmon Arm and Derby Armstrong. But our kids move amongst them and we need to, again, be very cognizant of our school because it's small. So it's hard for teachers to pick up, right? It's hard to, um, just for instance, my daughter in grade eight had. Twelve subs in grade eight math this year because they couldn't get a teacher in. And you know, when you do that to kids, how do you get to grade nine and ten and eleven? So I I, you know, I'm very protective of our little town and our school. Um, eighty-eight percent of those cuts are frontline workers. So it's management, eighty-eight percent is the person dealing with your kid. Or grandkid.
Yes, my question is, they're dropping it down, of course, because there's less less kids to look after. Or educate or or, you know, help with support and stuff.
They say?
No. There's no money.
Yeah.
Kids are the same, supports less.
Uh, Kelly, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, no, and just quickly through the chair, I think highlighting um this table here, which does say forty-one less staff. Of which twenty-two of those are EAs and the cut of three million. So I think if we're gonna do a letter, that's what we wanna focus on is that. We want, we don't wanna see such a decline in in the FT. Correct? Is that kind of the direction that we wanna go with a letter?
Yes.
Council Bushel.
I mean, this till the end year, we should maybe even address about UBCM.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, this is just crazy, scaling back during all this construction.
And perhaps we should send it out to um. Um, the um. Yeah.
Minister of Education.
Not just the Minister of Education, but, you know, um, all the parties running right now, like, let's send it out to, uh, you know. Those folks, yeah, exactly. Like, what are you gonna do about this? Cause it's really important. And if we maybe make some noise around that right now and see. You know, I mean, we have a lot of power for a little town, you know, or, you know, so I think that, yeah, we can definitely do something like that and see where. See if we can get some noise on it. Council Beach.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that I just went to the grad event and it was the largest grad we. Grad group we've had in years, I think thirty. Is that right, Siobhan? About thirty. And I don't know what the next group coming up, how what the numbers are like, but we're growing. We're not disappearing. We're growing.
Yep, Council McCave.
When was that meeting on Tuesday? What time?
Oh.
Cause I'm suggesting maybe, you know, as many counselors that can go should actually go to that meeting. For some physical presence.
Yeah.
Cause that that's the.
The, oh, sorry.
I could try and sure I go to that.
Through the chair, the agenda package isn't on the website, but it looks like the meeting, the last one on May twenty-first is at six P M.
Seven P M?
Six P M.
Six, six P M.
But I think to uh Bianca has highlighted up there, it does state in that that briefing note about. Um, reduced enrollment numbers, uh, base enrollment reduction. Um, so I'm just curious, there's no set motion on the table about the letter. So is there a desire for. Uh, council members to attend the meeting and to consider the letter? Are we wanting to write a letter now that addresses the cuts to? Um.
Staff.
From to the staffing, um, and that. That this council would not support, but maybe can you clarify for me?
Are we talking just to School District eighty-three right now? That's, oh, we're talking, this letter is to School District eighty-three, but we will write another. I think if council chooses, right?
Yeah, there's no motion on the table yet.
I know, I just wanna find out where direction we should be going. Siobhan, is this?
Uh, yes, uh, through the chair. Um, I think we need to address both. I, this isn't going away, right? And I mean, we are you you. Older council members are more, what do I call you, marinated? What do I call you?
Siobhan, sorry.
You guys have done the school thing once.
If we wouldn't have done that, we wouldn't have had, we wouldn't have an elementary school here right now.
Absolutely.
Believe that.
So I I do, and we we took it right around the area. We went out to Malacca. We, you know. We called whoever.
And and it's starting again.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I don't know how to do.
So is there a motion then, uh, from what I hearing is there's a a a desire to write. A letter or two letters um that addresses the concerns related to School District eighty-three budget. Uh, cuts as well as to um the Ministry of Education regarding funding for.
Provincial.
Yeah, provincial funding. Okay, so staff can uh. Yeah, provincial funding. Okay, so staff can uh. Work with maybe Counselor Rich and um the trustee Brent Jennings around drafting that letter. Or two letters.
Like Kelly mentioned, specific to the reduction in F T's.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So Counsel Rich, you wanna make that motion?
Make a motion for the two letters, one provincial, one to school district eighty three regarding frontline staff and budget cuts.
I'll second that. Good job, good job.
If I could suggest that staff send out a a outlook calendar invite to council. Meeting is on Tuesday, time and location.
Mm hmm.
Please.
Okay, so with that one motion, we'll cover both letters. Perfect, okay. Counselor Bushel.
We want to add anything about the, you know, the healthcare center and daycare and uh all the permits that are kind of sitting on the table? Or like we're getting ready to, you know, the apartment building around the main street. Saying how we're growing and our 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 graduation classes. Couple. Couple of what it's used to be and do we wanna add maybe a fact sheet, include a fact sheet?
Well, I think when they write the letter, we're gonna have to add some facts, like some. But is there a way for us to? To know. How many kids, if salmon arms growing or shrinking? Can we find that out? And Ender B, if they're, are they growing or shrinking or?
I'm sure they have, they have stats for each school district, each community.
I don't be good to know. It'd be good to know what's happening in and around the area.
Thank you, Ms.
Okay. Kate, any more discussion on this? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thanks for bringing this up, Siobhan. Um. Okay. Council reports. Counselor Evans, did you wanna kick off?
Sure, um. Open up my notes here. Wrote down a couple of things. Um. First, I'm gonna ask my iPad a question. This will leave what I'm talking about. Hey, while it's thinking. Hey, can I build a swimming pool at seventeen twenty Mountain Avenue in Kelowna, B C?
Can build a swimming pool at seventeen twenty Mountain Avenue in Kelowna, B C, but you will need to obtain a building permit first. The city of Kelowna requires a permit for the construction of any swimming pool.
Now, when I went to F C M last week, I found out from. One of the counselors um on the A I interactive panel that forty percent of the building permits in Kelowna, B C. Are passed in twenty four hours now because of A I. Because it reads all the permits and everything and they uh anything light can be passed quickly instead of weeks. And I thought that was pretty cool. And um you can ask any device like that that's connected to the data. It'll tell you, which is pretty cool. So something I thought we should look into because. It saves a lot of time and a lot of frustration because that's something that's really cool. Um, and it was great to go and we got to, I went to uh um a session on um. Uh, Dick Forum for counselors and uh and staff and learned how to um. Act better at meetings. And I voted uh. For anti bullying and harassment for people like us that serve at these levels because there's a lot of people like us that are actually harassed. And um for our produce doing our jobs. And so that was interesting. Um. I didn't get to hear uh Prime Minister Trudeau, but uh the mayor and Kelly did. I was not allowed in the room. I don't know why. No, I was full. Um, and um. It was good to go uh to a place that sells medical equipment so we could start looking into uh furniture and. Equipment for the uh for medical center. I attended the earlier's meeting yesterday, talked to a lot of people about what's going on in Sigamoose and uh toured the new daycare today. Kudos to Amr um Amr Deep, who is the guy that took over with his wife Karen. They've created a great center there. They're they're, I think they're maxed out infant toddler. You got sixteen um. Sixteen kids in daycare. It's growing. They're adding staff. It's a beautiful, beautiful facility. And I just wanna say Jamie's gone, but kudos to Jamie for years of putting together a great kids club for our kids. And taking care of that need uh until this to this point. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Bob. Kelly?
And I just wanted to add something on the daycare. I also took a tour with Amar and I asked him how many people he's employing. He's thirteen.
Awesome.
How many he's planning on employing in the new daycare, so.
Excellent, thanks. Counselor Rich.
It's been busy. So uh first shout shout out to Deb and the market. Over thirty vendors. I think I dropped about a hundred and fifty bucks in an hour. And I wasn't the only one. It was packed and fun and fabulous. Thank you for what you do for our community. Uh, ball tournament was great. Spent some time down there. Again, Daryl Fields looked great. Everybody was happy. Uh, I attended grad, which was also awesome. Thank you, Ian. Good speech. Um, what else have I done? Uh, been in contact with Eric. He actually called me our C O or uh conservation officer. Uh, lots of bears in Sigamoose right now, lots of issues, and uh that'll be coming up in two weeks for me. Because Eric has reached out for me. Uh, last night was a workshop with our bear. People, Joian came out and we had, I think, over twenty three people here. Um, and that was awesome. Been dealing with school district eighty three and Brent Jennings and also our principals. So that was great. And um. We lost Nellie DeWitt um. This past couple of weeks, and she was a pillar of our community. And I just. Wanna just take a second to acknowledge her because we were very lucky to have her in our community for so long, and she did a lot for a lot of people.
Thanks, Counselor Rich. Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair. Um, yeah, I've been uh busy, uh filled with a few developer calls. I attended a meeting in Calgary. I was asked to attend uh with a new developer who's. Looks like he's purchasing property on Riverside, so that's exciting for Sigamoose. Um, uh, I went to the mural market that uh Deb and their team had put on and uh the Legion did a fine job too. And yeah, they're doing great things down there. That was an excellent evening, and I couldn't believe all the people in town that weekend and that brought us to the ball tournament. Great job, Daryl. You're in your team, putting everything together there and. Um, also shout out to Shane and uh Shane Shane Yarmoy and uh John Braun. They set. Emote and uh help set up some lights for backup in case we needed, they needed them. And uh, yeah, that uh lit up the one field for the night. So that was cool. Um, I had the planning development meeting, uh field visit with uh with Silver Sands with Nicole and uh. In June, that went uh well with the Silver Sands folks. It was very informative. Um, planned, I attended the Sneeze meeting on Friday, June the sixth. Uh, their board and Carly has done some great things and they're getting everything. Organized and put together there. So they're, I I I'm I'm gonna start continuing to go to them. So they're pretty interesting. And um, yeah, I guess that's about it. I had a meeting with a rail trail owner who'd been away all winter, so. He's uh got him all sorted out completely. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, I attended on behalf of all the council, the graduation. Packed house, surprised me. Never been to one of those since my own high school graduation, but. There had to be like three hundred and some people there. I couldn't believe it. Anyways, a great event. Um, and I've just been. Doing a whole bunch of my own regular job. But um, a couple of things that I just been bringing on was. Recently with the Chamber Commerce, we all know about the hydro uh outage, so. Talked to quite a few business owners around town who are concerned and I'm concerned. Now, I I just wanna say something on that, that that I I do think this really needs a good, hard look at, uh especially June twenty third. I know they've decided to go forward with that, but that's a huge impact, like especially after we have dead times on either side. To get that close to what is essentially a fourteen week um business period. That's all we got here, right? I I mean, the economy of Sigamoose isn't that great. If we don't, most businesses don't make. Those fourteen weeks, and that includes every single day in those fourteen weeks, we're gonna have knock on problems. So. You know, I I get that B C Hydro has to do it, but you know. I feel like my job is also to protect the economy of Sigamoose, and a lot of people rely on these months. And it's not just restaurants or hotels. It's it's the entire thing. Um, so. Hopefully we get through this and then hopefully there's a chance to communicate clearly with B C Hydro going forward if there is gonna be further disruptions with the bridge. Um, and then um, yeah, just a few, you know, um. Constituent um issues. Oh, I, one thing I wanted to mention was. That the sled Sigamoose is going forward with their section fifty seven. Um, for those, we talked about this at council. Um, the decommissioning of the trails. And not only does it affect sledding, but it affects the A T E community. And they're putting forward another section fifty seven application, which. They thought they had, but the province came back to them and said, no, you don't. And so you were talking about the issues of. Um, dealing with the province. This is just another issue where. They thought they had gone through all their procedures with the province and the province came back and said, no. You hadn't. So now they're going forward with that again. And uh this is going to be a critical application, but. Um. Not only for the town, but for sled Sigamoose to allow these trails to go forward in the future. So. I think we just need to continue to monitor that. Um, I got an email from Steve. It's the deep front sled Sigamoose and they're on it, but um. I know council was engaged in that conversation that we had about a month ago. So that'll be kicking along. Thanks, that's it.
Can I just ask you a question? Is that the same? Is that the same one? Or is this a new one?
That's a new one.
It's a new one, yeah. Yeah, they're doing the section fifty seven for uh for our heaven delay. So I expect them to do this uh this this one over here.
Okay, okay.
Counselor Beach, thank you. Um, yeah, so right after our last council meeting was the last day of the um. Keeping it rural conference and and as I mentioned, the whole morning half day was dedicated to wildfire enforcement management. Really interesting. Insights brought forward. That's why I love going to these things. Um, you learn lots. Merit is is um. Merit is actually taking slash burning waste. Chipping and putting it to use to renewable energy. And I. I just wanna bring this up because it's something that we talked about on site when we were looking at our bio. Bioheat uh biofuel burner. And uh. There are communities that are actually doing this and recycling that slash, and there's no burning going on in in their areas. So. Um, learned a lot of stuff, get very inspired by those. Um. So the Shushua Watershed Council uh had a meeting this morning. I just finished that off uh before coming here. Um. Uh, I also attended the graduation, as I said, and was just amazed at the size of the class because I had not been for a. Few years and it was incredible, really well done. Um, and um. Took a um. Took a trail walk just because the last section was done. I wanted to get out there, heard reports from somebody who's been on it. And uh I won't say who um and said it was man. It was great. So, you know, there's a couple of rough spots there that I have questions. But I'm sure we're not done. So. It was, it was awesome to to see, see it completed to that point. I uh. Also um toured the rescue boat. Uh, Rob Sutherland took me out and and saw the location. So. That's another fantastic project that's gonna set Sigamoose sort of. A one of a kind place to have these services. And I I do too want to take a moment to recognize that. We lost a. A huge matriarch in leader in our community. So just uh on Nellie DeWitt passing, it it just. The people that came home for that was amazing. So, thanks, Pam. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe.
Um, going too much to report. I think I dropped about fifty bucks at the farmer's market. Not as much, not as much as. Uh, Counselor Rich and myself had a pre-meeting for council. The council was splatton, but that that was postponed, but. We're ready. Um. For my housing portfolio that the Counselor uh Rich is also involved with. Um. Staff's doing a great job and has just come along nicely with our two projects, one for. Seniors and for young families. So, great. And for my other portfolio, health, which uh Counselor Evans and. Counselor Beach involved with the. Building new uh shoe shop healing center that allows our community health center, primary care, then we'll expand our footage by. Three times the existing one. So again, thank you that Kelly and staff, that's come along great. Split it.
Thanks, Counselor.
Great.
Thanks, Counselor McCabe. Yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, if you look up that screen there, there are priorities. We're we're hitting on everything, like. Sigamoose is um definitely on the move and. And I feel like we're doing a really good job and staff is doing a great job of navigating all of this. And I hear from people all the time. How excited they are about everything that's going on in the in the community and things that are. And they're happy. They're like literally happy with the direction. So um, that's good to hear from um our constituents, the folks that elected us. Um, so yes, and I went to the uh to F C M, which was um one of the biggest F C Ms. Um, ever, largest, thirty one hundred people. Um, they, so I went with Ca- uh C O Bennett and Counselor Evans. And the theme was redefining our future. So they had, you know. Delegates, workshops, panel discussions, trade shows. So it was, it was basically action packed. Um. And then keynote speakers, um, Prime Minister Trudeau was there and he got some claps and he got some booze. It was interesting. I found this F C M very political and probably because it is right before an election, but there was. Yeah, there was some mudslinging going on. So, but I like F C M like that. I thought this was like, this was a gutter. So anyway, um, yeah, so Prime Minister um. Uh, Minister uh Sean Fraser, uh M P Scott Atchison, N D P leader uh Jagmit Singh and Green Party leader Elizabeth May were. Headlined the show. So um, no, it was, it was good. I also spent a lot of time, um. Um, Kelly and I spent a lot of time with B C Hydro because we did pick, just. So everyone knows, we did pick a day and we picked a time and we had a discussion with them. Logistically, everything did not line up the way we wanted it to, right? And so, but before we can get the positive, the bridge going. We gotta take care of this biz. So I did reach out to a lot of businesses and um. I I I didn't get negative. I've got some folks that were a little, you know, uh hate it, but you know what? It is what it is. We're gonna. Move forward, reached out to all the hospital companies, reached out to C P Rail so that. We can figure out if, you know, that train bridge can be open or not. So it was a lot of stick handling, but um. Yeah, end of the day, the folks that I talked to, because we even tried to change the time to maybe later in the afternoon if we could do that, or they can't do it at night. But um, the morning shift seemed to work a little bit um. As far as folks that I reached out to, so um. So that's. That's moving forward. So, but they did, they do understand the impact this has on Sigamoose. We did have this conversation. So if there's anything moving forward and. We will continue to do our best to uh to mitigate. Um. Impact on our businesses. Um. So um, yeah, that's kind of it for me. Let's go to. Public input. Deb.
I'm cheating, but I'm just, this is the first council meeting we've had since the market. So I just wanted to give you guys a few statistics, kind of an update on it. So we went from on average to last few years, less than ten vendors to over thirty. We tripled it. I spoke to the vendors afterwards. They were all thrilled. They did very well at the market. Um, the girl guides, I'm going to, I think I mentioned to you before, have like a a public service group there every week. And they did some of their fundraising and cookie sales and water sales, plus the market donated another hundred five dollars to them for from uh. Uh, hot dog sales. Eighteen rain barrels were given away to residents free of charge to help in the whole. Recycling reuse of water, reducing water. Um. The a private donation was made to the resource center to purchase products directly from the market, from the food bank. As well as we received our first five hundred dollars for the future. Coupon program. And the market has converted. And the market has converted their full honorarium that they're given for their expenses in managing this program to the food bank for nutrition coupons, so they, we, we're really working at expanding that program, and I'm also talking to Shushua Community Foundation about options for expanding on some of the private donation or donation from them part uh to work with the local meals programs, like the seniors' meals programs and that. Uh, the, uh, we actually had uh some mushroom foragers show up, and they managed to spin off a little mini spring festival, so we're really hoping to expand on that next year. And our next market is July fifth, it will be every week until September twentieth. So I'm optimistic, I've already received a lot of requests for additional vendors, and the ones that were there want to come back too, so uh, and the elementary school, of course, is trying to raise funds for their uh playgrounds, and they said that they would like to be at the next market uh for that, and Fire Smart will be there, so all, and thank you to uh everybody that showed up, it, it's, I'm it, it was much better than I expected, definitely.
That's awesome.
Quick reminder, communities and Bloom judges will be here in the next month, July eighth, the ninth. I will be talking to staff and working through the area, and it's what we gotta do. I will give an update to council uh at the next council meeting. And uh, so we're good on that, our volunteers have been going hard on meeting and stuff, so we're doing good. Pick the ball tournament, there's been lots of sign-ups so far. Bunge Fest, I lost my accommodation for my experts. Because Joe Schmucks is now going to uh long-term leases, so I got a little bit scrambling to figure out where I can host my experts, so.
How many?
Anyway, I'll figure something out.
How many do you have?
Uh, Joe Schmucks always come to me three, and uh I had five that I needed to get rooms for, so I've, I've got a few ideas, I'm, I'm so, I'll get it.
Okay, just, yeah, keep us on the loop, let us know if you need anything, and Deb, thank you for everything that you do.
It's all good.
Okay. Um, do we have anyone else on the screen? It's just staff?
Pretty much.
Okay, well, let's adjourn uh the committee, the whole meeting for June the twelfth, we adjourn the time being. Um, three thirty-three, Counselor Rich?
Counselor McCabe?
All in favor, and we are adjourned, let's take a five-minute break and then